Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The date is February 24th, 2021. This is your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting and the time is 6:01 PM. And I am going to call this meeting to order. Just an aside, there are no scheduled hearings. Public input, as always, may be provided using the following methods: the email address, the telephone number, and the Zoom link as listed on the agenda. And as always, a recording of the meeting will be accessible on the Town of Dayton YouTube channel for later viewing. And will also be replayed on Channel 9 on the regular schedule. And with that, I would like to take a roll call before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Selectman Pacheco?
I'm here at present.
Selectman Goulart?
Yeah.
All right. And Selectman Zagrafos is here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
While we're standing, I would like to mention the passing of Edward Swakan. I do not believe I mentioned him at a previous meeting, and I remember seeing this in the paper, so I'm mentioning him tonight. In addition, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the over 500,000 people that we have lost in this country from COVID-19. A moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And first, under scheduled appointments, we have Bridget Kenyon, who is a candidate for the town clerk position.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening. So I did want to open it up. I know that, just for the, so the public is aware, there were already interviews conducted by, I believe it was Mrs. Brady and our current town clerk, Sue Medeiras. Is that correct? Okay. And, but I did want to open it up for questions from the board. If the board had any questions for the candidates. And so with that, I will open it up to the board.
I'll go first. I'll ask the first question. And this is to both candidates. What do you see as the clerk's job and responsibility?
Would you like me to answer first, or would you like Mark to answer first?
That's fine.
Sure. First of all, it's to serve the town, the townspeople. It's to ensure that records are accurately kept. Elections are done to the letter of the law. But to me, it's mainly serving the public in the town.
Just so everyone's aware, sorry, Ms. Kenyon and Selectman Pacheco. I put Mr. Pacheco back in the waiting room. We will ask the same questions of him once we're done asking Ms. Kenyon the question.
Sorry, I'm sorry he was still here.
My apologies. Selectman Goulart?
My question is, you've been a resident of the town for quite a while. And so with being a resident and having served on the Finance Committee and now applying for this appointment, what do you see as far as, I'd say the most urgent concern are concerns, if you want to mention more than one, that we have to be concerned about as residents of the town?
As residents, I think the growing population is one of the biggest topics that I feel. You know, our schools are going to start to struggle. Our town hall is, you know, bursting with seams. As we know, there's been a lot of renovations done. There's been staff increases in keeping the budget in line with the tax revenue coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My question for both candidates, and I will ask Mr. Pacheco when he's present, is why, what interested you about the town clerk role? And why do you want to be Dayton's next town clerk?
So 16 or 17 years ago now, I was also interested in the role. And I had applied. And at that time, Sue was appointed town clerk. She's done an amazing job. But I've always wanted to serve the community. I went on and, you know, kind of broadened my horizons in my career. And I've worked for some of the very larger corporations in Rhode Island. And I feel my experience and my background will really bring something to the town. But I really just want to serve the community for the remainder of my career.
Thank you. Selectman Pacheco?
Sure. Bridget, Ms. Kenyon, if you were asked to do, if you were asked to do something work-related and you didn't know how to do it, how would you handle that?
So there are several things. I know that the Assistant Town Clerk has been there 30 years. She's very knowledgeable. I believe you and the other selectmen are at my disposal for assistance. The town administrator would also, I believe, be an asset to me. As well as, I would think, and I don't know this for sure, but I would assume you would be able to call the other resources at the other towns for insight. There's also the MMA website. And I know that there's a certification that is offered. It takes about three years to get. So I would also be interested in doing that as well.
Thank you.
Selectman Goulart?
Yeah, that kind of leads to my question. Are you prepared to, I'll say, go to school? For lack of a better term.
Absolutely, absolutely. I've actually done the research and printed out the information on what's available and what's required. And I definitely think in the next three years, it's attainable.
Thank you.
My question is, you know, nothing's really done in a silo in government. Everyone works together. And I guess my question for you is, what is your experience in working on a team and working as a team player?
Well, in my prior roles, team has always been extremely important. You know, you work for a big corporation like CBS, you can't do anything in a bubble. You have to be able to identify who the key stakeholders are. You have to be able to bring them to the table. And, and, you know, with some confidence, you have to get them to want to believe in your vision and what needs to be done and support your vision to help you get to the final goal.
Thank you. Selectman Pacheco?
Ms. Kenyon, have you supervised employees? And if you have, has any of them ever refused your authority? And how do you handle that?
I'm sorry, I missed the last portion of your question.
I'll repeat the whole question again. Have you supervised employees and who have refused your authority? And what have you done about that? If someone has refused your authority?
So yes, I have managed many employees over my career. And, you know, as you know, not all are going to be wonderful. I actually tried to take one under my wing at one point because she was very knowledgeable. And I thought she could be a strong assistant. But turned out, you know, and I hadn't been there that long, but it turned out she had ethic issues. And in my pursuit of trying to help her through that, she stumbled and unfortunately fell, and I terminated her.
Selectman Goulart?
As we're all aware, this past year, from an election standpoint, has been a nightmare because of not only the changes in voting, you know, all of a sudden, everybody can vote by mail, whereas we used to have just the absentee ballots. And then, of course, we had early voting again this year. And then, and then on top of everything, we had to deal with the pandemic. So looking back on that and thinking ahead, because we're still in a pandemic and we will be having a, an election in April. Thank goodness, it's not a national one, but it's still a town election. Do you feel confident in your ability to deal with what's ahead of you, basically?
Absolutely. You know, I work for an organization today where we were considered necessary and workers. So we never worked from home. We built a committee to make sure that the employees were safe with the social distancing, the changing of how our office space and, you know, our staff space was, I guess, functioning with the, we brought in, you know, all of the dividers. We had to hire special companies to come in and clean. We're a home health organization. So our staff was often exposed to COVID. So we've set up testing in our building. And I think all of that will bring something to the town.
Thank you.
I can't remember whose turn it is. Is it mine or Selectman Pacheco?
You.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was. Thank you. Ms. Kenyon, do you have any prior experience in running municipal elections or any other type of election?
I have worked the last two presidential elections. And I want to say two or three of the general town elections under the direction of Sue. So yes.
Thank you. Selectman Pacheco, sir?
Yes, this is my last question. Are you able to multitask? And can you give me an example of that, please?
Multitask every day. Demands at work are changing and they come from all of the executives. So it's prioritizing, it's reprioritizing, it's changing direction. I've had to do that through the majority of my career, so I'm very comfortable with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Selectman Goulart?
Yes. So as far as the, the total role of the town clerk, we've been talking a lot about elections. But obviously, vital statistics is, outside of elections, vital statistics certainly is an area that is paramount to the role of the town clerk. Do you have any knowledge of the interaction that Sue or Pam have had as far as the role of the town clerk in vital records? As far as the, the system that they have in place? That if somebody passes away, what that process is and how it gets recorded and the interaction with the state?
I do not have any insight to that. Although I'm not afraid to learn a new computer system. I, you know, I'm very much an eager learner. And I feel as though I'm a quick learner, so I don't find that would be a challenge. But unfortunately, I don't have any insight to that system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Kenyon, my last question is, do you have any plans or priorities that you would want to implement in the clerk's office if you're selected as the next town clerk?
So without knowing what happens today, I would like to get in and do a full assessment of all of the workload and how it's performed. And then kind of step back and look and say, how can we do some process improvement? Can we make it more efficient? Can we streamline it? And, and what does that look like? Taking one piece at a time? You know, you certainly don't want to look at everything and jump in and try to change everything because that doesn't work. You know, Sue's done a great job, it appears, of managing and getting the work done and, and keeping the town in compliance. But it's always nice to get a fresh set of eyes on something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Kenyon, I'm going to admit Mr. Pacheco into the room. And I'm going to put you back in the waiting room. And when we're done with his portion of the interview, then I will admit you back in, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Hello, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Mark Pacheco. I'm sorry, we have a few Pachecos in our presence this evening.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Pacheco. How are you, sir?
Very good. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for applying and being interested in the role, sir. My first question, actually, I'm going to defer, I'm going to go in the same order. Selectman Pacheco, sir?
Yes, first of all, I want to make it clear that I am not related to Mr. Pacheco. Nor am I related to Joe Pacheco. Maybe distant relationship in the Azores. That's where mine came from. So there is no nepotism going on here. So my first question, Mr. Pacheco, is what do you see the job as a clerk's job to be and responsibilities of that job?
My understanding of the job is, first is voting. Making sure all voting is organized and recorded properly and, and recorded. They're the keeper of all, basically, public records. They are in charge of licensing, marriage license. They keep the town records of birth and death certificates. They are a liaison for a lot of other boards and committees. And open meeting law. They, they have to post, they're involved in posting all meetings in accordance with the open meeting law. And I know that they are involved in town meetings and recording those. And they hold the town seal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Goulart?
Hi, Mark.
Hello.
What do you see as, as a major issue or major issues on the needs of the town? Speaking as a resident, not as town clerk, but as a resident of the town of Dayton?
I, a major issue for the town, I think right now, is we, you know, our saying is small town, big heart. And we're growing very quickly. So we're kind of, we have a small-town feel, but we have a lot of housing. And that brings in more children to the, to the town and, and the need for more infrastructure and schools and town services, of course, too. I know a lot of the town officials are stressing, have more workloads. I see we have some on the agenda for tonight. So I think we're, we're in a transition period. We're a growing town right now. There's more people, they're commuting further and further to work. So there's a draw to the living further from Boston. And I think there was a big housing boom and we saw a big growth in Dayton this year. And I think that's, that's a challenge. And we're all, we're all working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pacheco, why do you want to be a town clerk? And why Dayton's town clerk? What interests you about the role?
Absolutely. I plan on being a lifetime resident. I love Dayton. I love the ruralness of it. I love the people. I met Sue a couple of years ago. I always had good interactions with her. I have a strong interest in government. And in my current role, I kind of, I view myself as, I'm a property manager. So it's like a, a small version of a government, basically. We have a small little community. So I think it'd be just a nice challenge to serve the townspeople. And it's, it's in an area that I'm already familiar with as far as record keeping and, you know, talking at a higher level, memos and delivering important information. So I think it would just be a nice opportunity to serve the town. And I know we have great people on both sides. So it'd be, it'd be nice to, to serve.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Pacheco?
Mr. Pacheco, have you supervised an employee who refused your authority? And how did you handle that?
I have. I, when I was young and working through college and retail, I was one of the youngest managers. And I had a particular employee who was very not motivated at all. And we always had task lists. And I would always, you know, assign them to this person and wouldn't listen at all, just completely would be ignored. They liked to be on their cell phone, ignore customers. And thinking about it, I thought the employee was just really disengaged. They just, they weren't happy with what they were doing. So I had a conversation with that employee. I told them what I was observing. I noticed that they didn't seem very motivated in their role. And if, would they be happier in another department? So we ended up moving them to a different department in the store. And it was a big morale booster. The employee started to listen better and they were just more engaged in their job. So I was able to help that employee become more engaged. I listened to them instead of just, you know, we could have been a lot more strict and just run them up or, or whatever. But instead, we were able to retain an employee and, and find what they were happy doing and have a partnership. But realize, I'm the boss, we can make things happen. But at the same time, it's not all about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Goulart?
Yes. Are you aware that there is training required in order to be able to do this job?
I know there's a town clerks association, which I looked at.
Okay, no, I'm talking.
But I'm not.
Okay, I'm talking, I'm talking. Are you ready to go back to school? There is the, the training that is offered through the state, I believe, is approximately three years. That doesn't mean you're going to school for three years. But there's a sequence of trainings that are offered and town clerks participate in them too. And this is over and above anything special that comes down, like a special rules for elections, like we all saw this past year. So I'm, so I'm asking you, are you prepared to go to school to enhance your skills and to better understand what it is you need to, to bring into your job as, as you are working as a town clerk if we appoint you?
Absolutely. There's a lot that I would have to learn and I love learning and I think that would be great. I miss taking classes and going to school. That would be fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my next question is, what is your experience working collaboratively as a team and as a team player?
Absolutely. I'm currently a property manager, as I mentioned. So I work for a board of trustees. So that's, I'm an agent for them. So that is a, a board that is unit owners and a town home condo complex. So really, I feel like I live in the gray area. I'm always, you know, I recommend, I do as the board asks me to do. And we're always, you know, I'm the property manager and they're the board. So we always see things different. So it's always compromising and working as a team. There's never, it's never one size fits all. It's always working what, trying to align our goals from what the board wants, what we want and what the community wants. And it's always, everyone has different perspectives. And it's, if you're not a team player, you, you would never accomplish anything as a board. And if the board doesn't accomplish anything, you don't accomplish anything.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Pacheco?
Yeah, Mr. Pacheco, if you have been asked to do something work-related and you didn't know how to do it, how would you handle that?
Absolutely. I think I've had a lot of experience where I'm alone and you have to figure it out yourself. So I think that the town clerk position, there, there's so much opportunity, there's so much riding on what you do. I would look at whatever the laws are and the statutes, whatever I can find, you know, from a sound source. And also, I know this experience, people in the offices and Assistant Town Clerk. I would look to my colleagues, absolutely. But really, I would look in writing resources because the written word is the most important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Goulart?
Do you feel confident in your ability, and I'll say to take on the new tasks that would be completely foreign to you stepping into this position? It's really a level of confidence that you would be coming into a new employer, a really new job, things of that nature. And, and yes, you will be working with experienced people in town hall.
It would absolutely be, as you said, it would be a completely new challenge. It would be an opportunity. I have a lot of energy. I want to grow and learn. I wanted, servicing the town, of course. It will be a lot to learn, but I feel like we have great people that work for the town, great residents. I feel like there would be a great support system. I'm, I'm very motivated to learn and to get into government. So I think it would be a great, a great challenge and a great opportunity. And yes, I feel like I've had very varied backgrounds and that, that would help me. And I've had career changes before. So that would be, you know, from operations to property to government. So that would be, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And my question is, do you have any experience in running elections or municipal elections?
I wouldn't even call it, um, elections. We do voting for, for board members at the end of the year. So we do ballots for, it's 101 condos. So it's nothing like what we would be doing in Dayton with over 8,000 residents and much, much smaller scale. And it's, of course, it's a municipality. So very limited.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Pacheco?
Mr. Pacheco, my last question. Are you able to multitask? And can you give me an example of you multitasking?
Absolutely. I, I think my job now, I'm multitasking a lot, whether there's residents coming in or working with vendors. A good example, I would say recently, was we had a water main break. And it resulted, we had to close two streets down, which was 27 homes. So not only was I coordinating with the vendor and the town and the fire department and making sure that we could close the streets and get the proper sign-offs and, and all of that. I was also having to run back and communicate with the offices of my company to get the approvals we needed there and send communications out to the unit owners and neighboring communities. We actually, it's Marina Bay in Quincy and they lost water all the way to squine them. So it was a big area affected and it was on my, the property I managed that had to water main break. So it was basically running to my office and running to the source of the water main back and forth all day. And I think that was a great example. I had a lot of residents tell me after that they felt informed every step of the way. And it could have been handled much different where people wouldn't have known what was going on. And although we were knocking on doors, sending emails or phone calls, everybody knew exactly what was happening. And I was still getting all my other tasks done. That was a challenge and a, it's a good, had a good result, good end result.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Goulart?
Um, excuse me, Mr. Pacheco. We've talked a lot about the role of the town clerk as, as it relates to elections, national, local, so forth, so on. Very, very important part of the town clerk's office is the maintenance, recording of vital statistics. Have you had any kind of experience or do you have any knowledge of the role of the town clerk and its relationship to state-level requirements? For example, in recording the passing of somebody?
I know there's the annual town census and they, they do the federal census every 10 years. And I know they have to maintain the death records and birth records. But beyond that, I'm not sure what happens with, with the list or how it's reported.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And my final question is, do you have any plans or priorities that you'd like to implement in the clerk's office if you're selected the next town clerk?
That is, that is a very good question. I, I think I would be very new to the role and I would have a lot to absorb. And I know it's huge shoes to fill. So I would want to, if I could be 70% of Sue's, I would, I would be happy. And if all our residents are happy, that would be my plan, is just to serve the And if all our residents are happy, that would be my plan is just to serve the, the townspeople and learn the role the best I can and, and then hopefully work on improvements after that.
Thank you, sir. So I believe those are all the questions that we asked and I'm going to admit Ms. Kenyon back in. Ms. Kenyon, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you. And thank you both sincerely for applying. We don't do this often, so I, I really don't know where to start. I guess my first question would be, was there any solid sense from the folks who interviewed the two candidates? Or, um, you know, is this really just like a board of selectmen? Go with your, you know, gut instinct? That's for anybody, Mrs. Brady or Mrs. Mederos. And, and you can say no, and then the board will discuss who we feel would be the next best town clerk. Ms. Mederos?
Um, good evening. Um, yeah, Brad, as you just mentioned, Karen and I interviewed, not as, you know, both candidates. They were both excellent candidates. As we both know, none of them have clerk experience. But they can learn just the way I learned. You know, I came in and didn't have any clerk experience, you know? You have the tools out there to help you get through it, you know, whether it be Secretary of State, the Attorney General, your other town clerks. The town clerks do have an association and they put on, in every June, this like three days of school that usually down the Cape. That's so important, especially if you are just coming into the job. I, you know, I don't feel that, you know, I mean, if you had a town clerk that already had experience, was coming from another town clerk's office, it would make that, that a lot easier, you know, say, well, you know, okay, so this person has the most experience. So that being said, them, they were great, great candidates, both of them. I really was impressed. I enjoy speaking with them, but the way I look at it, they're both new to this. They're going to need some direction, some help from the board. And of course, you know, Pam, the assistant, and even the girls in the treasure collectors office, we all work as a team. So at this point, and I, you know, I don't know if Karen feels the same way, I think it comes down to who the board's going to feel comfortable with. I'm not going to be here. So, you know, who do you feel comfortable after interviewing tonight? Who do you think is the better candidate? Bridget's a very good, strong candidate. Mark's also a good candidate, you know, strong candidate. So, you know, it kind of puts me kind of, you know, in the spot where, you know, that, you know, if I was staying on in another position or something like that, you know, it'd be a little different, but I think I'd like to leave this one up to the board.
Okay, I understand. So who wants to kick things off?
Oh, Mrs. Goulart.
Oh, I just had a question. Um, since this is a, a position that is going to run through the end of June and then go into the, the next fiscal year. What's the salary rate per, per year that this job is going to pay? Because I don't see us negotiating a, a contract or anything because it's really not a contractual thing. So what is the, what would be the base pay for this job if it was starting July 1st? Because I think both candidates need to know that upfront and obviously they'd be eligible for benefits and things like that.
So I think that needs to really be, you know, decided by the board, I guess, but the town clerk and I did discuss it because obviously, you know, the town clerk had to do the budget for FY '22. Ms. Mederos, did you want to comment on it?
Sure. So I really didn't know, um, well, I can go back when I started and when I started, but that was like 16 years ago, my starting salary was like 54,000, but we, we, we couldn't go there. So I think Brett, you and I once had a discussion when I was first starting doing my budget and just, you know, at that point, we already knew I was leaving. And we looked at a couple of figures and what we came at, okay, I had it right in front of me. So the, and this is also looking, what we did is we had the survey from the, all the local town clerks in the area, whether it be Berkeley and Akushnet. I'm just kind of looking at the list here. Fairhaven, Free Town. And the salary that I had put in my budget was actually higher than some of those towns, but then it was lower than some of those towns, you know what I mean? So when we spoke, I said, you know, this is what, what I'm putting in after that first conversation you and I had, Brett, months ago. So the salary is actually, it would be $64,919, which is, which is 3566 hourly. But there's a $375 stipend for being board of registrar and then a $300 stipend for mileage. Because your job does include every single day going to the post office, you know, you have to go to the post office, you have to bring the mail. You have to post the warrants for all town elections, town meetings. So that brings the salary to 65,594. That is the salary that we discussed and I put down in my budget. That being said, you know, it was just the budget that I put in like two months ago, so.
Okay, I was just looking for a ballpark. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I guess my question would be, um, is the board comfortable with that salary? How does the board feel? And again, the reason I'm asking is because that was a preliminary conversation that happened between myself and the town clerk. And it wasn't a broader conversation, obviously, that the board had because the board doesn't meet to make its recommendations until March is when we're going to do them at our March meeting. So I just want to gain, you know, the thoughts of the board as to what they feel.
I'm comfortable with, with this, uh, Mrs. Mederos has said as far as her budget. So I'm okay with the 65,594 stipends. So this person will be starting up as a new position. Mrs. Mederos, like she said, she's got 16 years of experience. She gets paid more than that. She gets paid for experience, experience and knowledge. So I'm comfortable with the figure that, that Mrs. Mederos has mentioned.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that number. As I said, I was looking for a ballpark and as I said, plus benefits and we have excellent benefits. Anyone who has a degree, bachelor's, master's, so forth. There are additional, there is additional money paid. We have an excellent insurance program and the town pays 75% of that. We have a liberal vacation policy and those are all the kind of things that, at least when I was in the, in the job market, so to speak, all of those were important, not just dollars. So I, I just wanted the opportunity to have the ballpark out there so that our two candidates know what we're looking at. And, and I will just remind our candidates that every year at town meeting, uh, we vote the budget for the next year. So everything that happens is contingent on a town meeting vote. And because this is, will eventually be an elected position, you're filling in right now as an appointee. But at town meeting, a town meeting vote actually sets the salary of elected officials. So that's something else, which hasn't been a problem, but it's different than if you were to just come on and be appointed to a position and whether you had a contract or not. So, uh, elected positions are a little bit different, but I just wanted them to be aware and, and I'm happy, I'm, I've got sufficient information now because I think we have a ballpark.
I can read out some salaries from the surrounding towns if you need that. If you're comfortable with, you know, what's in the budget. If not, I can kind of say, you know, what the, what the salaries are in surrounding towns. If, I think Karen might even put that in your package. Can, is Karen, Karen's there, right somewhere?
It was sent to us. I'm not sure if it's in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah, it was sent separately, I believe.
Okay. And now how does, where do we want to go on a selection?
I'll speak for us. First of all, I want to thank both candidates for applying for the position. You both have great resumes. I've listened to the answers to the questions that we've asked and I'm supporting, I want to make it clear, I'm not related to them, but I'm supporting Mark Pacheco for the position of court in Dayton.
I got to tell you, it was easier to appoint the town administrator. I thought that one was going to be tough. And we ended up, uh, first round a unanimous selection. This is a tough one for me. Because I think each candidate is equally qualified. I think they truly want to do something and at the government level in town. And, um, I'm going to agree with Mr. Pacheco. I'm going to support the other Mr. Pacheco. Mark.
Thank you, Selectmen Goulart. In good old democratic fashion, I, I, I actually do agree 100% that both are exemplary exceptional candidates. And, you know, it's an honor that they even considered applying and it's flattering that they wanted to work for the town and give back to the town that they live in. I'm going to support Ms. Kenyon. But obviously I know how the votes shake out and I know that Mr. Pacheco will be our next town clerk. And I congratulate him, but a little prematurely. So with that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Pacheco, the town clerk. I'm sorry. I think we should say effective, Madam Clerk, March 1st, 2021?
That would be correct. I, I'm, I'm assuming that Mr. Pacheco, and I'm kind of hoping that he would have to give a couple of weeks' notice to his current employer, I think. I mean, I'm not sure, you know, what is required of him at the job he's at, but I don't know. Mark, is that something you would have to do?
Yes, yes, I would give at least a couple of weeks' notice. Absolutely.
So when would you be available to start?
It's the 20
Fourth, the 15th maybe, March 15th?
15th or 22nd, those are Mondays.
Whatever's better for you guys. That would give me ample time.
So what, what would be your, you, you picked the start date. When can you start? The 15th or the 22nd?
The 15th would be nice. I'd get more time with Sue if she's still there.
Good answer.
You won't be, unfortunately. I'm going to make the motion that we appoint Mark Pacheco to be the town clerk until we have an election. And that appointment starts on March 15th, 2021.
And through the period, Sue, what's the ending period? Is it April of next year?
That is correct. I'm not sure the exact date for the election next year, but it's anywhere between April 9th and the 13th. So Mark would have to run. He's been appointed by the board to be an interim town clerk to finish out my term. So my term would end on April of 2022. At that point, Mark, you would have to run for reelection. Happy to say that I was appointed also the same way you were appointed tonight. I came into the position, appointed to finish out a term and then I ran the following year for the, on the ballot. So it's usually the way it works. So as an appointed official, you report to the Board of Selectmen and they would, they will guide you, they will help you. I know when I started, the Board of Selectmen were, were like an amazing stepping stone for me. They were always there to help me out. I always made a point of keeping them in the loop, asking for their advice. You'll be surprised that you're going to get that from everywhere in this building and committees and boards and the residents. It's, it's such a team. It's just a big team, you know what I mean? So, but it will end, your, your appointed position will end in April of '22. And then I would hope that you would then seek to run for the position.
Okay, friendly amendment, Mr. Ken Pacheco. Beginning March, excuse me, beginning March 15th through April 2022. Is that okay with you?
Yes, that's fine.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain respectfully, Mr. Pacheco. But I do look forward to working with you, sir. Ms. Kenyon, as always, I look forward to continue partnering with you as well.
Thank you for your time, everyone. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, sir. Congratulations. Okay. Ms. Gales, I apologize. Next thing on the menu, on the menu, on the agenda or the menu, is the historical marker program. Bear with me just a moment. I have to scroll. Okay. Ms. Gales, hi, how are you?
How are you?
My apologies for being tardy.
It's an important position.
You understand as well. We are behind. So you're here to discuss the historical marker program. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm here to promote our historical marker program that's through the historical commission. I'm the chairperson of the historical commission. And we started this program to highlight properties that are significant to Dayton's history. And the properties can be private buildings, commercial buildings, public buildings. They could be churches, it can be sites. It could be places that have significance to Dayton's history. And the historical marker program, it highlights the architecture of buildings, the significance of people and events in our community. And it helps to educate our own community and its visitors to Dayton's rich history. And we have such a wonderful, rich history. The marker is oval in shape and it's made of PVC. I do have a picture of the marker that was awarded to the Winslow Davis House, the Historical Society Museum. I don't know if you can share the screen, Brett, and I can show everyone rather than, um.
I don't have it up. I'm sorry. It's on my iPad.
Never mind. It's very attractive. It's burgundy. It's an oval shape with cream lettering. It has Dayton, Massachusetts at the top and the Dayton Historical Commission at the bottom. And the wording, names, say, for example, the House and Winslow Davis House as the significance to the, the people that were there. And it'll give a date, a circuit date sometimes, or the exact date if it's known of the important event or person or house. The cost of the, the marker is $125 and it's paid by the applicant and the property owner. And there is an extra charge for mounting it if, you know, someone wants to have the company mount the, the marker onto the building. The program application and description, including the criteria, is available on the town of Dayton website under the Historical Commission so that people can access it and you can download it. We had planned to have it available at town hall hard copies, but of course, town hall is closed, so that really hasn't worked well. And the really exciting thing is that the Dayton Historical Society has decided in supporting this program to offer a one-year free membership to new members to the society who participate in this historical marker program. So the, the Historical Society and the Historical Commission have the same mission in Dayton. We share common ground. Rafa Delphin, he is a member of our commission. He is the project coordinator for this marker program. So he can be contacted for more information and I can just very quickly give his email. It's rafa, R-A-F-A-D-E-L-L-O at gmail.com. And that's also in the materials that's on the website. So that's it in a nutshell. We're really excited about this program. We think it will enhance Dayton's history and it'll make it, you know, pop for our community. So thanks for your time. I guess I can have questions if anyone has them.
You sure you want to answer them? No, I'm just kidding.
No. I shouldn't have offered. I shouldn't have offered.
Selectman Pacheco, do you have any questions, sir?
No, I don't. She presented the same program to the Dayton Historical Society Monday. So I'm familiar with it and good luck with it, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, I'm waiting for your house, Ken.
Selectmen Goulart.
I'm disappointed, I lived in a house that was well over a hundred years old on Main Street and it, it would certainly fit within this category, and if I were living there now, I would certainly be doing this. I think this is great. It was nice back in nineteen sixty-two when homes were identified. And to be able to bring this back again, I think it's really important. I am glad to see that people want to recognize the, the many, many older homes we have in town and the fact that people still occupy them and, you know, keep them up. And hopefully they'll be here for another hundred years.
So it's a great way, and I feel your pain about living in an older home too, because I grew up in one.
Beautiful one.
Yeah. All right, so that's it, unless there's anything else?
Does anyone have any other questions?
Oh, thank you, Pat.
Okay, thanks for having me, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is road salt correspondence from Jeffrey Souza. And Mr. Ferry was here to, I know we had read an email that we had received regarding the salt treatment on the roads, some concerns, and Mr. Ferry, sir, if you wanted to have the floor, and I think we also received an update from Mr. Souza. Give me one second. He stated, Mr. Ferry, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted, I wasn't sure if you were aware, but Mr. Souza had sent another email and he just said that he appreciated Leanne reaching out to him regarding the upcoming meeting. He won't be able to attend tonight's virtual meeting, but he would just like to share a few things as far as his previous email to us and to Mr. Ferry, he's not looking for an answer as to what was done, but more of a future plan on how we could possibly reduce the use of salt that is used to treat the roadways. And he said, as I'm sure most are aware, salt is extremely corrosive, not good for our rivers, streams, wells, and damages personal property. Please pass this along to the board and I look forward to a solution for our town. You have the board, Mr. Ferry.
Yes, I, I, I think is, both letters were written well. I, I do agree with him on most of the points. That particular day in question that spared the first letter, I wish he came to me directly. So he understands the dynamics of the treatment of the roads then. Like he says, it's not so much of that event, it's more of in general. So I, I would, I would take it under advisement, I advise the board to do so also. Maybe even go as far as recommend to the Stormwater Committee for best management practice on this, for the future use.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I will entertain motions. More questions for Mr. Ferry? He's saying, take it under advisement.
Oh, um, I'd like to make a comment before we make a motion.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
When Mr. Ferry recommended and mentioned the Stormwater Committee in his response, one of the things that we monitor very carefully, because we have to put it in the MS four, which is the annual report that goes to the EPA and the DEP every year, is the amount of salt and sand and things of that nature. And so I, I agree with his recommendation that we take it under advisement, but I just want residents to know salt use or anything that's put on the roads of that nature is monitored very closely. And so it's not like it's being put out there and other than Mr. Ferry, nobody's keeping track of it. So it is, it is being monitored by the Stormwater Committee and actually reported to the EPA and the DEP. So having said that, I will make a motion that we just take this under advisement and refer it to the Stormwater Committee to continue to monitor the application of, of salt and other chemicals for snow and ice control.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just wanna express my thankfulness to Mr. Souza for bringing this to our attention. I have had a conversation with Mr. Ferry as a result of this letter, I think he's doing everything proper. He's conscious of the amount of salt we put on the roads. We have some of the best roads in this area. We talked to our residents, they'll tell you, they'll tell you that to go into our neighboring towns and the roads all of a sudden are icy and snowy. So I do wanna thank Mr. Ferry for everything he has done. I think Mr. Ferry will take that into consideration, the amount of salt that are put on roads that mirror aquifers and water and wells and stuff like that, so, but we do want the roads to be safe, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? And I will second that, thanks, and appreciation. Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye to take that correspondence from Mr. Souza under advisement. Superintendent Ferry, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next on our agenda, we have a status update on surveillance cameras with our Building Commissioner James Aguiar. Hello, sir.
Good evening, board, good evening, fellow town officials, and good evening, people of Dayton. So as we started to discuss in around the new year, there was a need, or the talk about a need, for security cameras around the Town Hall and Old Town Hill campus. In that initial discussion, we started at the, at the basics, do we want wired or wireless? It was determined that wired systems were the, were favorable method for a few reasons. Particularly video quality and the ability to archive and have access to that footage in the unlikely event that something was to happen. I know Chairman Zagrafos gave an update in my absence a couple of weeks back. I was looking into wired systems and were soliciting contractors. I submitted and updated a letter this week. I won't read it verbatim because I know we're behind on time, but I just wanted to bring to the Selectmen's attention that back in December, you know, quick cursory estimates were a little over four thousand per building. With the escalation in video quality, which is needed if we're going to be able to obtain what we're after, and some of the hardware improvements, the costs are a little bit higher than that. The low bid for Old Town Hall was five thousand seven seventy-five and ninety cents. And the low bid for Town Hall was seven thousand four hundred ninety-five and seventy-five cents. So with that, I'll take questions or we can just have discussion, whatever the chairman prefers.
It's at the privilege of the board, Selectmen Pacheco, Selectmen Goulart, do you want, do we wanna act on the?
Yes, I, right, I do have a question for the commissioner.
Sure.
Is this a one-time fee, so we're paying to have this installed, we monitor it? And there's no outside agency that monitors the cameras?
That is correct. We'll own all the equipment, it will be ours. We will be the only ones that have access to this, and we can control which individuals, which town officials can access the cameras. There'll also be hard drives for each building, so the video footage will be archived. Talking with the vendors, they feel that we'll get somewhere between forty-five and sixty days of footage before we'll overwrite, which is more than enough time if something was to happen for us to pull the footage from the hard drives. They're also gonna include monitors for each building, dedicated monitors at the hard drive unit. So, you know, if, if the police department or somebody needed to come in and review footage, they'll be at their own terminal. That's all included in this price. There is also web-enabled access, so this does include an app that we, town officials can access that hard drive through an internet connection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Selectmen Goulart.
So is you're recommending, are you recommending Resende's Electric, Mr. Aguiar?
Yes, Selectmen Goulart, I am. He was the low bidder. He's a known contractor, so he's more than competent to pull through for us.
Mr. Chairman, are you accepting motions?
Happily.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract, contracts for the security camera systems, one at Town Hall, one at Old Town Hall, to Resende's Electric Incorporated, one sixty-nine Reservoir Avenue in Swansea, at the total price for Town Hall of seven four, seven thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars seventy-five cents. Old Town Hall, five thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars ninety cents, for a total of thirteen thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-five cents as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. And under discussion, Mr. Aguiar, how did they give, like, will we have the, this system forever? Or is there like a life expectancy on it?
No, there is a warranty with the cameras, yes, the, the, the system that we're buying is an excellent system, so there is longevity to it. I also, in the request for proposals, asked for a system that had expansion capabilities. So if we find that the number of cameras that we included in the quotes isn't adequate enough, which we, we, I mean, the Old Town Hall, I believe, is six cameras and Town Hall is eight cameras, which should be more than enough. But the hard drive unit is expandable if we decide to add cameras to it somewhere else in the, in the campus.
Does it have to be on the, sorry, I don't mean to belabor the point.
No.
Be on the campus or like, could it be, I don't know, like the animal shelter, for example?
So a hard-wired system is building-specific. You, you suffer a little bit with expandability to other areas with the quality and the video that you gain with a wired system. So if we wanted to do another building in town, we would have to do another hard drive monitor wired system. But bear in mind, these two buildings are probably the most complex with the amount of egresses, entrances, parking areas, et cetera, et cetera. So if the Selectmen so choose to move forward with other buildings, the cost would be much less than this.
Thank you, sir. Did anyone else have any annoying last-minute questions like me?
I know.
All right, hearing no further questions, let's take it to a vote, Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. And Mr. Commissioner, I know it was a lot of work and a lot of research, and I just wanted to thank you for taking that on.
Well, thank you, and I wanna thank the board for their patience. I know it took a couple of months, but I wanted to make sure we were doing this once and had the right system in place, so thank you for your patience.
Agreed, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very well.
Have a good evening.
You also.
Thanks. Okay, next on our agenda, we have Mr. Pilling for a status update on contact tracing slash vaccine distribution. And then I did ask for a discussion on the overtime hours for the Board of Health. And then I also have a bit of an update regarding vaccine distribution myself. But I don't know if Roz wants to, or, excuse me, I don't know if Ms. Grassi or Mr. Pilling want to be the bearer of good news? I'm just logging in.
Sorry about that, hi.
It's okay, hi.
So yeah, so there's a lot going on. We actually had a couple of discussions today with the COVID coordinator in Taunton and also the Taunton nurse. And they are looking or offering that Dayton could regionalize with them if the Board of Selectmen decide that they would like to go that route. There's quite a bit to it, they're more than willing to help us out and help us through the whole process. And I'm not really sure of the direction that the Board of Selectmen would like to go. So we've got a lot of information today from her. It's it will be an ongoing process, it's not something we can sign up and do our elderly and then say, okay, thank you, we're all done. It, it, it would be through the whole process. So we're probably looking at five or six months of one day a week that the town would have to commit. That we would be able to bring something to the table to them, probably employees to help out in, there's a wide range of aspects that they need people to work, not only just the injections, but there's administration, there's clerical, there's reporting, there's traffic control, there's security, there, there is a vast, vast need. And I think it would be great, we're still getting calls daily that we have residents that are so upset that they can't get appointments and they don't know what to do and they, they're fearful, but they don't wanna drive all the way to Gillette or to Dartmouth.
Understood. And when Senator, so this all came about, at least for me, and then my first call was to the Board of Health, of course. I got a call this morning from Senator Mark Pacheco, and he is the one who is interested really, along with, you know, the other city of Taunton officials in coordinating some sort of a regional response, and he explained it to me that part of the reason is because the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, for those who might be unaware, has basically decided not to allow municipalities to do it locally, like by themselves anymore. So all those towns that were doing clinics, my understanding is those have ended or should end because they will no longer be giving those towns the vaccine. However, it does appear that the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is going to allow regional administrative sites, vaccine distribution sites. But I did explain to the Senator in our conversation, I made it clear that it would really that what the Town of Dayton needs is a vaccination site that's closer than Foxborough or Dartmouth, which are probably the two closest right now. And he said he understood that, and hopefully he's taking that back to whoever he's working with. I know he's working hand in glove with, obviously, the mayor of Taunton and other officials at Mass DPH. So was that all accurate, Ms. Grassi?
Yes, very. And what they're asking, if the town decides to move forward, is they need our help. They need us to reach out to our state representatives, to our senators, and do whatever we can to help them get the vaccine. Right now, he was, we Fall River was trying to get the vaccine, and they said, nope, you're too close to Dartmouth. Attleboro was trying to get the vaccine, they said, nope, you're too close to Gillette. So Taunton right now is centralized, and they're hoping to be able to do this and to be picked to be the regional site. But what they're looking for is for the towns that they're trying to regionalize to reach out to their representatives to help Taunton be the site. And Taunton would be the best site for us, it's, it's perfect if, if it was there.
And just in my, like, casual conversation, like, this is not, this is not statistical evidence or this is literally anecdotal from talking to elderly folks, also talking to Alice Souza and other folks involved with the COA. The biggest complaint is that people don't wanna drive to Foxborough, they don't wanna be driven to Dartmouth. They just want a closer option. And I, and I, I totally understand that, I think we all understand that. The, I guess the bigger question, and board members, correct me if I'm wrong, and please stop me if I'm getting ahead of myself. If we think that the focus right now, and I believe personally, my personal opinion, is that we do need to shift our focus to vaccine administration away from the contact tracing, especially now since the cases are going down. So I think the board needs to come, and that's why I put this on the agenda, we need to have a decision on whether we want the Board of Health to continue the contact tracing, like the overtime for the contact tracing, or if we'd like them to shift their focus to this regional vaccine administrative effort.
So.
I know that's a loaded question, if you wanna take a, a moment.
No, for the contact tracing, in the past month, we've reduced the number of cases by seventy-five percent, so we're not doing that much contact tracing. And secondly, it's my understanding that if we hire somebody, not have our employees, but if we hire people to participate in the vaccinations, MEMA and FEMA paid the full amount for those, for the cost of that. So I'd be interested in hiring some people, whether it's we hire nurses for the vaccinations, we hire people to keep track of who's being vaccinated. we hire people to keep track of who's being vaccinated, the paperwork and that kind of stuff, rather than have our town employees, unless we're going to get reimbursed fully.
Sure.
Employees.
Selectman Pacheco, that's a really good point. And those are the conversations that I've been having with Chief McGee and with Mr. Pilling and Mrs. Grassi. And my understanding is that only overtime is reimbursed. So for like a staff member, like an employee of the town of Dayton, only the overtime would be reimbursed. What you're saying is 100% correct. If we were to hire a company or specific, specific temporary employees for this vaccine, this regional vaccine administrative effort, that is 100% reimbursable through FMA PA, my understanding. So you are 100% correct. Selectman Goulart, do you have any thoughts on this?
Where will the regional clinic, I'll call it, where will it be actually located?
Well, Taunton is trying to have it in Taunton. There's three different sites that they're looking at right now. They don't want to give an exact site at this time, but they do have a very, a perfect site in mind. It's just they need us, you as the Board of Selectmen, to get the vaccine and get them approved to be the site. Because right now, there's no site approved. It it's not that it's definitely Taunton. Taunton is doing everything they can in their power to get the documents that are needed and to provide all the information showing that Taunton is the optimum site area.
Yeah, and they haven't approved Taunton yet. So until they approve them, it's not going to reveal the location.
Is is Taunton reaching out to Berkeley or any other community or strictly Dayton? Do we know?
There's eight communities that will be involved in this regional agreement if everything comes together.
Okay, so if the Board of Selectmen in Dayton votes tonight to agree to participate in a regional collaborative vaccination program, I'll call it, for lack of a better term, this will be enough for Taunton, and we could send a letter stating we voted that. And this will be enough so Taunton can collect these, I'll call them letters of support, and add them to their package so that they can hopefully get permission to actually set up this site. And then we go back and talk about staffing and things like that. I don't imagine we got to talk about staffing and things tonight.
No, no, I think it's more you would, they would like you to reach out to our representatives, Pat Hadad and maybe again, Mark Pacheco, and just let them know that we really need this. Like, it's, there is a need here. We have, I think Todd has all the numbers for how low Bristol County has been, like in the percentage of vaccines that we have received is it's it's awful.
If you want to give me co-host, I can share the screen and show everybody.
This means you have to stay all evening, Mr. Pilling. No, I'm just kidding.
Nope.
Overtime.
Yeah.
So this chart is by county. You see the number of cases that they've had positive to date. And then obviously, the number of doses and the dose to case ratio is
The worst.
Insulting.
Yeah.
Well, not only that, they kept pointing out that Bristol County was at one point, the hottest spot in the state. And look.
Well, it still is. If you look at the last column on the right, it is still the highest.
And we can't get vaccine. That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, what she, what she was looking for you to do is to reach out to our representatives and and just be the squeaky wheel.
So Todd, at the last Board of Health meeting, it was stated that the state is not giving any more vaccines to cities and towns. In fact, I've seen Eastern has to stop giving the vaccines. I've seen, see that Swansea and Somerset have to stop giving vaccines because the state is not going to give them vaccines. How optimistic are we that we are now going to be able to regionalize on this? And secondly, I like to point out, I had to go to Gillette Monday for my vaccine. I wish I had known about this. I would have waited probably a little bit, but I understand people's concerns about driving over to Gillette or Dartmouth or whatever, anyway.
Yeah, so they stopped the towns from doing it right now. They're only allowing a regional site that can do more than 750 doses a day. And that was why, like even Taunton was only doing 400 a day, and that was a strain on their resources. That's why they needed to pull and get it. Do I think it's a likelihood? Yes, but as you know, there's politicians involved, there's other things involved in. But looking at the numbers and the stats, and there's other stats that play into it based on income and ethnicities. And that's why I think it would be a very strong case for Taunton. But they need more towns to kind of join the club before they can present their argument.
Thank you.
And I did, and I forgot to mention this, and I apologize. I asked for, because things are changing every day. Like even just today, Ms. Grassi and I had a million conversations and things were evolving and changing constantly by the minute. But I did want to pull some stakeholders together to start discussing like logistics, meaning what the town could possibly offer in lieu of, you know, basically staff, because, you know, we want our regular public services to continue, all the services that everyone expects to continue. But we do need to have a conversation. So I did ask for the police chief, the fire chief, town accountant, Mr. Gale, our ADA coordinator, COD coordinator, excuse me, and a couple of other people who will be instrumental. Obviously, those couple of other people are Ms. Grassi and Mr. Pilling. And I did send an invite to you, Mr. Mullin, as well just now. I apologize. And so that meeting hopefully will happen tomorrow so we can start discussing logistics. Depending on the vote, of course.
Of course. Mr. Chairman, are you accepting motions?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Dayton Board of Selectmen contact Senator Mark Pacheco and Representative Patricia Hadad and advise them that we voted, I hope it's going to be unanimously tonight, to request that they work with the city of Taunton and other communities, which includes Dayton, to get a regional vaccination center set up and operational to address the needs in this part of the state.
I'll second that motion.
Under discussion, I apologize. We did have someone wanting to ask, Ms. Dushkowsky, do you mind unmuting yourself and name an address, please?
Sure. Jennifer Dushkowsky, 2414 County Street, Dayton. Thank you for taking my question. I guess, Mr. Pilling or Ms. Grassi, do you feel at this time it would be helpful if the townspeople all pulled together as well to reach out and enlist the help of our representatives in getting this to happen? Will more more voices ring true?
It might, but at this point, the Taunton asked us to have our Board of Selectmen reach out. They didn't ask us for a million people to be calling. I think they're just looking for the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
A question?
Sure. Selectman Goulart?
Um. So, so this is for Mr. Pilling or Mrs. Grassi. When, let's assume that this gets off the ground and and this regional collaboration has approval and we have a site and they're going to provide vaccines. Does the staff have to be paid staff? Or can there be volunteers from communities who are willing to donate some time to, whether they're nurses or whether they're people willing to help with registrations or things of that nature?
We did discuss that today. We have a list of people that have called and offered to volunteer. And we did follow up with them today and confirm that they are all still available. A few are available for different things. Some are nurses that would be happy to help with injections. Some are friends of theirs that would like to do clerical. There, there's not a lot. I want to say we probably have 13 definite. And we did mention that, you know, can we put it out to the townspeople that we could, you know, see if they could be interested in volunteering? And what the coordinator said that we spoke this afternoon, she said, that would be wonderful. She said, you just have to keep in mind that volunteers go away. They're not going to commit to six months. They're going to come in for a couple of weeks or, you know, a short period of time. And that's wonderful. But we need to have some sort of a backup in place that if we don't have enough people, that we can call in more.
Okay, I asked that specifically because I've mentioned before, I'm on a list of volunteers if we have an emergency. And I'm obviously not the only person. But certainly, by the time this thing gets up and running, I will have had my second shot. I have tested positive in the past. So I would hope by the time something, assuming we get to do this, you know, with my vaccine and immunity, I would certainly be willing to do something. That's why I asked specifically.
No, that's wonderful. Glad you're to the list. Thank you.
ADA Coordinator Gale, I feel like your phone keeps going off. Are you trying to chime in, sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions. It's probably going off because of where I am and what I'm trying to to do and not do. And I've had to keep it open the whole time. So a couple, a couple, a couple of questions come to mind here. With regard to non-volunteers for this, if it were to ever come to fruition, I would, I I heard what what Todd said about the Board of Selectmen sending a letter in in support of this process. And I think that's an excellent idea. I will also say separately, from all of the years of work I've been doing at the State House, it certainly does make a difference if residents call their state rep or state senator independently or send emails independently. The Board of Selectmen is great. But, you know, if you have 20 or 30 or 40 or 50 residents sending phone calls or emails, that speaks volumes. So I would, first of all, encourage residents to contact their state rep and state senator, and perhaps even the governor's office, and, you know, encourage them to support this particular project. One of the questions I have, first of all, is with regard to volunteers, I agree, volunteers do come and go. But potentially, who are the people in town who could support this project? For example, there was conversation before in some other discussion areas about the town nurse. Is the town nurse available to provide us any support on a regular basis or a once a week basis if this project were to get off the ground? Because she's already contracted with the town.
Yes, well, let me just back up and say, I think what the city of Taunton was looking for was for the Board of Selectmen to call the state rep and say, we are behind this. The state reps want this. They just want to know the towns are supporting it. It's the governor's office and DPH that has to make the decision on whether Taunton's getting it. So calling up Mark Pacheco's office and saying, hey, I'm a resident of Dayton, I want this. He already wants it. He just needs to know the town is behind it. As far as the nurse goes, yes, she's available to us and she can do certain things. But she's only one nurse. I'm assuming they're going to be trying to run 10 or 20 nurses at a time for eight hour shifts.
So the reason, the reason I asked that, it was my understanding that, for example, our town nurse, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, has a full time job somewhere else and is contracted. How is that, so how many hours a week or a month can we actually rely on our town nurse for support? For example, if we were to ask her to help coordinate some of this?
Not enough to coordinate it. But I think for a while there, we 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 could get like 12 or 20 hours a week out of her. But I don't think it's necessarily enough for her to coordinate it. What's probably going to happen is if we agree to do this and we go in with the city of Taunton and all these other towns, like, they're going to say, all right, you're going to be, Dayton will be in a region with Berkeley and Free Town and Fall River. And you four towns responsible for Wednesday. So then we work together with that group to figure out how we're going to staff Wednesday. That's kind of, I think, how it's going to shake down. It's not that we have to provide all 150 people to run Wednesday. We only have to provide our portion of it for a particular day. But somebody else is in charge. They don't need anybody else in charge.
But we theoretically could get our, our town nurse, you're saying 12 to 20 hours a week, even though she works full time somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay. My, my other question would be, would we, would our residents, they would need to go to a site? So we're still in a situation somewhat where we do have a number of Dayton residents who can't transport themselves for a whole variety of reasons, whether it's age, disability, otherwise. Did they talk anything or discuss anything about transportation to any of these locations? And let me, let me tell you where I'm going with this so that you'll know, because I don't know if this became part of the discussion today. So it can, it can be had an hour later. But I think I had forwarded an email, because I'm out of state right now. I had forwarded an email to the select board chair today, and I think also to the liaison, to to Ken, with regard to transportation locations and sources that is, are being provided to seniors through the mass health system. Do you know if any of those types of transportation systems through the mass health network and seniors network via mass health, because there are direct information there, I'm sure we'll discuss later, do you know if any of that transportation can be used for a project like this?
Oh, absolutely. For any of the mass vaccination sites, for any of the regular sites when the towns are doing it, that money is all available for you to get transport for any of these people.
Okay, so this would be considered a mass trans, a mass vaccination site potentially and would allow mass health or seniors healthcare or programs like that to provide transportation?
Absolutely, because right now Massachusetts is only allowing mass vaccination sites. So yes, this would be considered one.
All right, thank you. I'm good for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I don't know if anyone was aware, but I probably should have read this or read this under announcements. But someone forwarded me on the city of Taunton's social media page that the Taunton CVS at Hearts Four Corners launched their vaccination clinic this morning, and 1,000 appointments have already been scheduled. While these appointments went quickly, check their website for updates as additional appointments will be scheduled as more vaccines arrive. Mr. Pilling, do you know of any new sites like that besides that one that have launched that might be closer than Foxborough or Dartmouth? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just off the top of your head.
Yeah, no, I don't. Any vaccine they're getting now is only to administer the second dose. They are not supposed to be starting any first doses with new patients.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have any further questions? And I know this is under discussion. Selectman Pacheco?
No, just want to make a comment that tomorrow morning, they release new vaccines and Gillette Stadium, for example, Fenway and all the big places. Tomorrow morning, they will be releasing more vaccinations. And people who are interested should call, go on back to find up dot mass dot gov or call 211 to see if they can get vaccination.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Goulart?
Yeah, I would just add, since Selectman Pacheco and I have gone to Gillette, if anyone is thinking about signing up there and can get there, obviously, it's not like those pictures you saw on television with lines and lines and lines. It moves very quickly. They have a very organized system. So if you, if you can get to Gillette, I would say go online and get your appointment scheduled. It, it, it's an efficient setup. I'll leave it at that.
I would just add to that, that is very efficient. I was fortunate that I had Cam Newton give me my shot, so.
Really?
Are you joking? Oh, okay.
I'm joking. No, but they have, they have a great system. They have you wait either 15 minutes or 30 minutes, depending on your situation. But it was really a fast, quick system, very professional. They don't want you to get there too early and it just worked out great. And my wife has a vaccination tomorrow. So it worked out well. So I would encourage people, if you can make it to Gillette, that they start calling tomorrow, early tomorrow morning.
This, this is Mr., this is Mr. Gale again. And along those lines, I was just going to say, what I had sent over today to, to you, Mr. Chairman, was, I believe, information with regard to the mass health system and how to do it, how to call, the number to call and what you have to do. So if it's a senior or a person on mass health or any kind of seniors options cares who needs transportation, even to Gillette, for that matter, that information is on that email that I sent you earlier today. So, you know, a lot of folks, yes, don't know how to drive to Gillette or can't or unable or concerned about going out on open roads and so forth. Maybe there's a way we can get that information posted on the town website tomorrow so that if nothing else, people can at least have that armed information to call. It tells them what to do and walks them through it completely on how to do it, as long as they're in any way connected with mass health. And that means even all the seniors options, which applies to most seniors.
So if you need something, Mr. Gale, posted to the website, all you have to do is forward the information. And maybe just let our website administrator, Mrs. Kirwin, know what you want, you know, the blurb to say. But if you just email her that information, she's absolutely happy to get that on the website. And I agree, it should probably be there and it should probably be, you know, somewhat easy to find so you don't have to click 90 links to, you know, find a buried.
I will do that tomorrow morning and I will do that tomorrow. And I'll also request that it be posted. I will do that tomorrow morning and I will do that tomorrow. And I'll also request that it be posted. Um, to the Board of Health and to the Council on Aging and so forth as well, so that they have the information. Because that's information that any resident who calls them about, how do I get there from here? Would, would certainly want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You can go on our Facebook page also.
Yeah, absolutely. Selectmen Pacheco. Yep. If, uh, Mr. Gail, when you reach out to Mrs. Kirwin, if you could also let her know, we'd like that on our social media as well.
All right, thank you. I'll do it in the morning.
Thank you, sir. And before, um, I know it's out of order, but since we're already talking about the vaccines. We did have an agenda item under new business. I feel maybe we might want to start talking about that while we're already talking about the vaccines. But I did want to go first to a resident who had a question. Mrs. Solomon, do you mind just unmuting yourself and then stating your name and address, please?
Yes, Cindy Solomon, 2144 Pleasant Street. And I just wanted to mention while we're on the subject of vaccines, um, I actually was fortunate enough to get mine at Mashfield Fairgrounds. And they had an awesome setup where it was actually like a drive-through. And they had, uh, five tents available and then a waiting area where residents didn't even need to get out of the car. You just drove through and. Someone came to the car out of the tent, gave you your card, gave you your vaccine. And you went to a waiting area. So it was, it was phenomenal. Just throwing that out there. If you do see Mashfield, uh, Fairgrounds available. It's a, a drive-through. You're in and out in 20 minutes.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mrs. Solomon?
Nope, that's it. And of course I'm on the volunteer list for whatever comes with the vaccine. I'm happy to help weekends and nights.
Thank you. To that point, Mr. Gail, I did want to give you the floor simply, oh, actually. If the board is amenable, are we okay with taking the assisting residents with vaccines out of order?
Are you going to call a vote on this motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Selectmen Pacheco, this is actually for those who didn't remember like me, the original vote. To authorize or give the Board of Selectmen support for the regional effort?
Yes.
Selectmen Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an I. Selectmen Goulart, as always, thank you for keeping me on the up and up.
Hey, we, we recognized, you know, as you get older. Forget things.
I'm going to make a motion that we go to on the new business nine, aye.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, discussion. Hearing none, Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an I. Uh, not to put you on the spot, ADA Coordinator Gail, but this was your request. So I do just want you to have the floor. If you'd like to, uh, open us off, kick us off, excuse me.
So thank you very much and I appreciate it. Um, obviously, I think as we're finding in every single meeting of any sort that we have in the town regarding vaccination sites, locations, transportation. Everything is very, very fluid. And, you know, what, what we wanted to talk about two days ago isn't what we're going to talk about tomorrow. So having said that, um. I think it's important to recognize that. The residents of the town who have, and I'm going to focus on people with disability, but I'm going to. Ask everybody in your head to expand this to any resident because it really does apply. But residents who have disability and who are seniors who may or may have disability as well. Have a lot of concerns in town about how they're going to get their vaccination, where they're going to get the vaccination, how to use the 211 system, how to go online. All of the same questions they have or can't do that others have and can do. So we've, we've talked significantly about potentially providing residents with the ability. To support their need to call the 211 system or to help arrange transportation through what I've just described, things like that. I'd like to, to be able to work with some folks and come up with a method where we can do that. You know, the numbers were 75 and older before and now there's 65. Um, you know, and for folks who have, you know, more than one comorbidity and so forth as well. So those parameters keep changing. On one level, this makes what I'm suggesting more difficult, but it also makes it more paramount. So. Um, I'm, I'm suggesting that if there is a way, and I think this is something, um, I'd like to talk to the, have your, your. Okay to talk to with the Board of Health about and others, perhaps even in our meeting tomorrow. But if there's a way to be able to confidently support residents who can't use these systems themselves. To set up the transportation, to set up the shots. Um, we need to go about figuring out how to do that and we need to do it. We may only get 10 people that we do. But we have a small core of volunteers who are willing to do it. I'm hoping that some of the volunteers that are also. Listed, uh, through the Board of Health would be willing to share in some of this responsibility as well to do it. Um, I'm willing to help coordinate it. I can't do all of the coordination myself because it would probably take more than one person. But I do think it's something that we really need to do. We need to let the residents of the town know. That we're not just thinking about what we can do. And, you know, I hate to sound like this, sending letters to say we want to support something. But we need to let them know that right now there are things we can do, we're trying to do. And as much as the Board of Health has done an enormous job so far, keeping track and doing their skip tracing and so forth. I also think we need to be able to provide some kind of direct source to the residents. So I'm hoping that, you know, through this conversation we're having right now. I'm able to begin to, to put that together, um, with the members of the COD and other town, town officials. So that we can hopefully have something on board to begin by Monday or Tuesday and be able to post over the weekend. This is what we can provide for you. This is what we can do. Yes, it's not a site. It's not an all-inclusive Taunton or anything like that, but we're providing a resource and we don't know. How that's going to work unless we don't try. So we do need to try.
Um, so my question would be, what exactly would the service be? I understand there are definitely individuals out there who may not be able to. Like contact 211. I totally understand that. I also understand they may not be individuals who are able to get to. A vaccination site or even leave their home. So I guess my two questions are, who are we hoping to target? And then what exactly is the Commission on Disability going to do? Cause I didn't really hear in your explanation, um, Mr. Gail, like what the actual service would be. I, I, I hope that makes sense. I apologize.
It, it does. So in, in a nutshell, the service would be a resident contacting. The COD through the COD phone number. Um, or sending a direct email to me as through the position I have, you know, with, with the town. A resident who is 65 or older or has a disability or who does not or cannot drive. We would then reach back to that resident, get all the pertinent information we need from that resident. And assist that resident specifically with setting up a vaccination appointment and a vaccination location. And the time, and then probably in many cases also assisting them with setting up the transportation component through mass health. So it would involve a couple of phone calls or partly online and phone calls with mass health to set that person up. I think if we were to get involved in helping people set up for themselves in a companion or themselves in a driver and so forth. That gets complex. And if somebody has a driver who can take them somewhere, then perhaps that driver. Can also help them set up a call unless the person were to say to me, you know, Jonathan, um, I'm a person who is 67 and I have whatever and I can't drive. Um, but I have somebody who can take me. Could you set that appointment up for me, but I'll arrange my own transportation? Great. We can do that. That's what I'm suggesting we can do.
Thank you, sir. You filled in the gaps for me. Uh, Selectmen Pacheco?
Yes, so the, um, the, uh, Commission on Disability, we discussed this at our last meeting and we all. Uh, volunteered to assist the residents of town in this town. Uh, we're trying to get schedule appointments with them. I believe Jane Dukowski also volunteered as well as Kevin Smith. I don't, I don't know if he's on. Uh, perhaps Nicole Campbell also volunteered. So we do have some people that are willing to assist the town residents. We know we're not going to necessarily be able to help a lot of people get the appointments. There's so many, uh, different things. They have to have an email address. So we'll have to set one up with the town to get the appointments confirmed. You need that confirmation to be able to go to the vaccination place. So, uh, I'm willing to help as well as Mr. Gail. And Jen, Kevin Smith and Nicole. So you do have some volunteers in town. That are willing to help those that aren't able to make those appointments themselves. Obviously, if they have someone in their family that made the appointments, they should use them. These are for people that maybe buy themselves on computer literate, unable to. Uh, some people have had difficulty with the 211, uh, phone, uh, the phone. So. Uh, we'd be able to assist them and we would try to get them transportation. So I think it's a great idea. Uh, even if we get the place in time, we still would need people to assist some people, uh, to get that vaccination appointment. So.
And even, even, even if we got the place in Taunton, this is Mr. Gail, we would still need potentially to be able to provide transportation. As, as, uh, Mr. Pilling and I were discussing earlier, using the mass health system for some people. Or, or people or, or seniors, we would still need to help them arrange the transportation to get to that location. So regardless, we would be providing some sort of service. What happens is when we do this, just to, to clarify. There's a specific set of questions that we would be asking residents that do not, and I want to make this very, very clear. Do not violate HIPAA because the questions we're asking are questions that we're either punching into a computer. Or providing the 211 customer service representative, which again does not violate HIPAA. The only time we're asking for any specific information besides their age, date of birth, home address and so forth. Is when we're asking them what their insurance information is and who their carriers are. If the person doesn't have insurance or doesn't know, it doesn't matter. They're still going to get scheduled. We're still going to be able to schedule them. So whether or not they have mass health or whether they have Blue Cross Blue Shield. The system asks you if you have it, but if you don't have the card on you at that moment, or they don't have it when we're talking to that person. Then they can say, I don't have it. When we call, we're going to say they don't have it. That's perfectly legal. It's perfectly acceptable. So all we're doing really is we're, we're the scheduling service, I guess is what I'm trying to say. The only thing we would have to be able to determine with the individual is. There are certain sites you may go to. You may end up going to Dartmouth. You may go to Gillette. You may end up going to a CVS or a Walgreens that are, that are still doing it or has some available in a couple of cases. Whatever the situation is, when we set you up to do this and we call you back with the time and a date of the locate you're going. You need to make it happen. What we can't do, and I'm sure will happen in some cases. The resident will say, oh, oh, I can't do that. I can't do that. We can't work with that. We can't go back and forth. We're not going to, again, we're scheduling, but we're not a scheduling service. So it's going to have to be, you take what we give you.
Okay, so. I just want to make sure if we start announcing the service, then we need to perform the service. What we, what we need to make sure, and I'm not saying this like in a pejorative way. But if we set up an expectation as a town, I'm using like the royal we, we, the town. Set up this expectation, then we need to make sure that the, that the service is actually being provided by the volunteers.
Um, that is, that is correct. And I would, and I would not, and I want to make this very, very clear again. I would not, this is not something that's going to start tomorrow. It wouldn't start until early next week. Because the volunteers have to be in place and, you know, we don't know how many calls we're going to get or not. Or emails request to do this, but we have to have some volunteer time in place to make this to start to happen. If we get overloaded, then we're going to have to ask, you know, other folks and for more volunteers. But again, we have to have the parameters. Um, I've, I've sent some information out already. Uh, to folks who have, need to know some of it. I can send more of it out between tomorrow and Sunday. Um, so that we can hopefully get this running Monday or Tuesday and get it posted. But I won't do it and I wouldn't do it until we have these things in place.
I understand, sir. Um, and then my last question, and I apologize. Thank you for being so willing to answer. Um, is are you go, I know, I kind of understand your demographic and the focus of who you hope to reach by this, and I think it's really good. But I am curious to know, do you plan on extending this to people who may just not have internet? They may not be disabled. But they might be 65 or 70 or 75 and they just don't have internet. Would those people, like you will assist them as well?
I think we would definitely provide that assistance. Yes, that's part of the purpose of this. Is, you know, we don't know if a resident calls, do you or don't you have a disability? Um, they may or they may not. What we're doing is extending this process. So the people who fall into the criteria of who can get vaccinated now. Have a resource and a source to help them set up that vaccination. So, you know, it may not be somebody 60 or 70. It could be somebody who's 40. But, you know, maybe they can go online and they can set up their own vaccination. But they can't drive for whatever reason and they, they need us to help set up just the transportation. So it could be more than just one thing and it could be a different, depending upon the group of subsets that we're serving. You know, and what, and what the criteria are, are going to determine who we're serving. So the answer is yes.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Gail or, or about this? All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Zagras, Graffus, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Leonard Hall, 760 Main Street, Dayton. I was wondering if Mr. Gail's could. Give some contact information for those people listening this evening, if they would wish to volunteer.
That's a good point, Mr. Hall. Mr. Gail, um, I'll give you an example. Mrs. Solomon had said earlier that she was interested in volunteering. So Mr. Hall's asking, um, just, do you have some sort of contact info or email address where volunteers can send? You know, to sign up sort of to help?
So the, what they could do is they can send me an email to my town email address. Um, and then I can respond and I can, I can. You know, I can reach out to that person, find out when they might be available, how many hours they could give or what days they could give and so forth. So if they were to send an email to the town email address, yes, I could.
And that email address, I believe, is ADA, A as in apple, D as in dog, A as in apple. At D I G H T O N hyphen M A dot gov. That's correct, right, Mr. Gail?
Yes, it is. Yep. And anyone who is listening now or later, who wants to shoot me an email and say, I would like to volunteer. Um, I'll shoot you an email back. If you want to put your phone number in there, I will call you so that we can have a conversation. And I can get more information and explain more of the individual specifics of what you would be asked to do. Because some, again, some volunteers also may be more comfortable helping to do things online and others may be more comfortable holding a telephone to their ear. And that's important to note too.
That's a good point. Thanks.
So yes, and thank, and thank you for the question, sir. Thank you for.
Anybody have anything else in public as well? I'm asking everyone. Do we need to take a vote on this? Um, what is the consensus of the board? I think it's good. It sounds like people want to get involved. Um, we want to help our community. So what's the consensus of the board?
I would like to take a vote.
Okay, Selectmen Goulart.
Yeah, I was going to say, um. Whether or not we vote, I hope we will get updates at future meetings. So we know how this, how this program. And also, uh, let's say a progress report from, uh, Mr. Pilling, Mrs. Grassi on this effort to get a regional center going.
I will tell you, Mr. Gail, that I will definitely provide you with updates and reports. I can do that weekly. Um, and again, I would also suggest, um, to the, the Board of Health and the Department, the Health Department. When you get calls for people with situations like this, and I know you had mentioned about it one time, having listed people who are looking for resources and sources. I would be happy to take some of that information and contact some of those folks using the volunteers. To see if we can get some of those folks serviced, you know, earlier rather than later. So again, I'll be in touch, if not Friday, certainly by Monday to ask if we can share some of that information and, and work together on some of this. As you get calls going forward as well.
Thank you, sir.
That I have nothing else to add.
No worries. So at this time I will entertain a motion regarding Mr. Gail's, uh, request.
I'm going to make a motion that the Commission on Disability and other volunteers in town. Assist residents with getting scheduled their vaccination and transportation for those that don't have the ability themselves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? I just wanted to thank you, uh, Mr. Gail and the entire Commission on Disability. For, uh, thinking about this and, you know, gathering volunteers to implement it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen, uh, Goulart.
Aye.
Sorry, I, I goofed because I usually go to Selectmen Pacheco, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an I. Mr. Gail and COD Commission members, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you to the Board of Health as well. Next on our agenda are discretionary spending requests. Mrs. Brady, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pilling.
Yeah, can we finish the 635 hearing first?
Okay, I thought we were done. My apologies.
Um, so we're here obviously to discuss continuing overtime for the Board of Health. Because obviously right now we've been authorized for, for contract tracing. I know it was thrown out that should we be doing the vaccine, uh, discussions and continuing to do contact tracing. But obviously I want the board to say, yes, we can continue to work overtime. I do have some, uh, numbers. I know, uh, it was mentioned earlier about the 75% drop. But this is like a weekly total and our total to date. Uh, the ones in yellow are the ones that, uh, Mrs. Grassi and I have been doing. You can see the numbers have been coming down quite significantly of late. You can see the numbers have been coming down quite significantly of late. Uh, the number of deaths, we had a bunch in November and December. But we haven't had any recently. Uh, we're up to over six hundred cases total, but I think I reported that to the last time I talked to the Selectmen. Obviously, let's say we kind of thank thankfully it's slowed down a lot and it has helped a lot, but I I figured that needed to be added into the discussion. Um, as of tomorrow, I expect we are going to be dropped into the yellow. We've been in the red for weeks and weeks now. But based on our numbers, I believe we will be going back to yellow tomorrow. So, um, that's a great sign. It's been a long time getting there. Uh, most of Bristol County is still in the red, so obviously, us getting to yellow is a good thing. But yes, there's still a lot of work to do here, um, between contact tracing, obviously vaccines, calls, meetings, et cetera. So I would like the overtime to continue.
Selectmen Pacheco, I feel like you were going to say something. I apologize if you weren't.
No, so right now, uh, you're getting overtime. Is it up up to forty hours you're working?
Uh, no, I believe it was, uh, unlimited. Uh, we were back in the peak of this. I think we were up to like fifty six hours in a week. Um, we're down around forty hours now. Um, because obviously the numbers have dropped off and our numbers ha- our over numbers for hours have dropped with it, but it's still, we're still up over forty, but right around the forty mark, so.
And have you been asking to have the CARES Act reimburse the town?
Um, we've been tracking our time separately. Um, I know that for the last half of twenty twenty, we did an estimate back in like June for how much it was going to be through the end of the year. I don't know if we've done one for fiscal for twenty twenty one yet for what it's going to be. Right now, the CARES Act is good through December thirty first of twenty twenty one.
But you were, to Selectmen Pacheco's point, I know that the you and the accountant were working on this, like the submissions. I know he did do the submissions, but then some questions came back about, um, like FEMA and CARES had questions, and I guess Selectmen Pacheco is asking, like, have, has that been resolved?
Oh, I thought you were talking about going forward because a lot of times what FEMA asked you in CARES, they say, project your expenses and you say it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars. They give you a check for a hundred thousand and then you pay out of it. I thought that's what you were referring to. Um, so FEMA, as we discussed earlier in the evening, FEMA only reimburses for overtime hours. So for Mrs. Grassi, she's been on all overtime, but for me, because I'm only twenty eight hours a week, from twenty eight to thirty five has been straight time. And that's where the discussion point, the sticky wicket, has been with FEMA. I do believe that there have been some executive orders signed recently that have relaxed some of those rules on it. So I'm not sure where that's at right now, but I am not the one that's been communicating with Mima and FEMA. I believe Pruslavalet has been the one that's been talking to them, so I don't know what the status of that is at the moment.
Thank you, sir. And we can always get an update from the town accountant, just simply, and I'm only saying that Selectmen Pacheco because he'd be more familiar with the actual submission and any questions that were raised by the agency that he was submitting them to. You're welcome. Selectmen Goulart, did you have any questions about that?
No, no, mostly.
So I guess what we need to decide is, is overtime still needed? And it sounds like we had asked in our previous vote, the Board of Health to shift its focus away from the contact tracing, but to the actual regional efforts that are trying to get ramped up. And I guess the question that we need to come to an agreement on tonight is, do we think that that effort is going to require overtime? And as Mr. Pilling is saying, um, anything over thirty five hours would be reimbursable for this effort specifically to plow plan the effort would be reimbursable. But anything under that wouldn't because they would consider that his base or his straight time. Is that correct, Mr. Pilling?
It is unless you wanted to pay me overtime for everything over twenty eight hours, then they would reimburse for that. But yes, that is correct.
Okay. Uh, so what are the thoughts of the board on this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not ready yet to tell them to stop contract tracing.
Okay.
As that diminishes, I hope it frees up more time to do whatever needs to be done, either with this, trying to get this regional collaborative setup or, um, maybe working with, uh, C O D if there's anything they can do there or even, uh, setting up or contacting, uh, or doing specifics relative to more volunteers if and when we get our regional site. Um, and I would like them to continue, even if they aren't physically present, but to give us an update each meeting so we know what's happening. So I think that's probably the best way to do it is is, um, two weeks at a time. What I mean that, we want to know two weeks at a time. Uh, and at the next meeting, if the, um, caseload is so low that we don't need, uh, overtime for contract, contact tracing, uh, then we'd be looking to see, well, is overtime needed for anything else you're working on? So, um, I I would just assume not restrict that right now, but again, get a report at our next meeting. So we're kept up to speed on, uh, what's happening with cases and things like that.
I definitely agree that we should have, if it's okay, Mr. Pilling, and you can work on it with Mrs. Grassi, just an email with like an update that we could read, you know, every meeting, is that okay, Selectmen Goulart, even if they're not physically present?
Yeah.
So I totally agree with that. The only thing that's outstanding in my mind, and I don't know if you agree, Selectmen Pacheco, is is the C T C, the state agency that does the contact tracing through the Commonwealth, are they not caught up? Like, are they not able, can we not send these, what are we getting, eighteen to twenty cases a week now? Are they not able, are we not able to send those to them so we can focus on the regional vaccine effort?
C T C has always been available since, whatever, it's been months and months that they've been there. Um, they will tell you that they have a ninety eight percent contact rate and this and that. I will also tell you that we've had several cases that we're following in town here where somebody's sister lives in another town. I'm not going to name any towns. And I will give the person that lives in Dayton information and she will talk to her sister and get back to me, say, nobody ever called her. Your information was better than what the C T C gave. It was more educational than experienced and, you know, that kind of thing. But we've talked to a lot of people that their siblings or whatever, girlfriends, whatever it may be, have not been contacted by anybody. Um, so even though they're saying they're contacting people, they're not. I I'd say I'd like to think that, um, we are making a difference. But yes, we can at any point in time send cases to C T C. How reliable it is, I I am not going to guarantee that. I I don't think it'll be as good as the service we're providing.
Selectmen Pacheco, I didn't mean to, um, take steal your thunder there. My apologies.
Oh, I'm all set. I agree with Mrs. Goulart that we continue, uh, contact, uh, tracing. Uh, I would like to see if the state could do it, but, uh, Mr. Pillings has given us some indication that it may not be done as well as the town. And I would be interested in the numbers of, um, the number of vocals that have been made or contacts that have been made on a weekly basis also.
Then that might be helpful. And maybe, maybe just like an estimate, because I certainly don't want you to really, really sit down and think about it, but maybe like an estimate of how long it's taking for the contact tracing every week might be helpful for us as well. Just an estimate, you know, please don't sit there and time your, time yourself.
Yeah, and I I will say that everyone is a little bit different. Um, because, just because we have six hundred cases to date, um, every case seems to have at least one contact. In fact, it was a case last weekend. It was only one call on a Saturday and I'm like, great, it'll be a nice short day. That one person had fifteen people that they had been in close contact with. So we then have to follow the fifteen and then out of the fifteen, I think ten of them have all tested positive now. But thankfully, they were all in quarantine, so hopefully we were able to pull the weed before it spread any further. So.
Mr. Hall, did you have a question? I'm sorry. I felt like you wanted to ask something.
No, no, I didn't.
Okay. You're welcome. Um, so that's fine. We can continue as is and maybe as Selectmen Goulart had, um, alluded to, maybe just an email, you know, we have our twice, twice, um, a month meetings on the second and fourth, uh, Wednesday of the month. Um, and so any, you know, email correspondence would be sufficient.
Yeah, I expect there's going to be an awful lot of correspondence happening in the next few days, um, as the whole vaccine regional site in Taunton possibly develops. If that does come to light, there's going to be a lot of work to do for communications, uh, getting information out there and, uh, and everything else. And obviously, we're going to need help of a lot of other departments to do that. And I know the library has already said and Council on Aging has already said they're willing to step up. Obviously, Mr. Gail has said their group will step up. So it's going to take a lot of hands to make it happen, and that's why it's just going to take a lot of hours. And, um, so yeah, but we can update the the board as we keep going.
Thank you. So if we're continuing, then I don't feel like a vote is needed, right?
Do you have a cutoff date on the overtime? Did we say a specific date it was going to end or just?
I thought it was through this meeting, actually.
I thought it was March eleventh myself. That's why I was surprised to see it on here, but it did have an end date on your vote.
So that'll be on our next meeting is the tenth, I believe, so we can address it on the tenth.
Okay.
I think it's the tenth. Am I right?
Yep, you're right. Yes, correct. All right. Well, so we will revisit this on the tenth and until then, thank you both very, very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, Mrs. Brady, did we have any discretionary spending requests?
We did not have any.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is public input. If you would like to provide public input, just unmute yourself, state your name and your address, please.
To Chairman.
Yes.
This is something that came up, uh, within the past couple of days. I was made aware of it and I'm just going to briefly tell you about this legislation, uh, because I'm going to try to get more information and find out what MMA is going to do. But I think this is going to hit a soft spot with a lot of people. There is legislation pending at the state and the, um, in the House and at the Senate. And the bill is called the Beagle Bill, as in beagle dogs. This bill would allow for the adoption of lab animals, meaning after the animals have completed, uh, projects, I will say. These animals will be put up for adoption, just like you have rescue places. I didn't realize these animals weren't already put up for adoption. And I won't go any further with what happens, but there is legislation that is has strong support to make these animals, uh, available for adoption. And, um, it includes not only beagles, but other kinds of dogs. Beagles is the most common dog used for, uh, medical research. But it also includes, uh, cats and, uh, mice, and I don't know what other kind of animals. But I just mentioned this quickly. I think it's, it's something that we could all get behind, uh, being animal lovers. And I will contact MMA to find out if they have this assigned to a committee and I will report back at the next meeting. But, uh, for anyone out there, go online and check out the Beagle Bill and feel free to contact your senators, your reps, whatever, and get behind this because I I really think this is something that needs to be done uh, from just a humane standpoint.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, public input. Ms. Dushkowski, uh, just your name and your address, please.
Sure. Jennifer Dushkowski, two four one four County Street in Dayton. Um, I had written an email to the board a couple of days ago and I know that, um, I'm not sure if it was Mrs. Brady or Mrs. Kirwin who forwarded it on to Mr. Ferry, and I'm not sure if he's still with us. Um, but I was just looking for a decision, um, for the Girl Scout troop, seven six one one six, to be able to place their pinwheels for peace. Um, we had discussed Nancy, uh, Mrs. Goulart had a really great suggestion, um, to be able to put it up on the porch of Old Town Hall. And so we're, we have decided as a troop to put it into a planter so that it is movable. Um, but just looking for a decision on whether or not that can happen, um, because the girls will be present on Saturday doing their food drive, um, and they would like to be able to do that at that point in time.
So, um, everyone's familiar, I think my colleagues are familiar, we all received the emails?
Yeah.
Okay, the request. Um, so I will entertain motions if someone's prepared to make one or if we want to discuss it more.
I just have a question. What's Mr. Ferry's role in this?
My understanding is, I think Mr. Ferry is in charge of approving scout projects as a whole, but I'm not, I don't know to what degree because this is a smaller project.
Right. Mr. Ferry is involved with all potential Eagle Scout projects. That's what the policy is that we develop. And so I, I think the Board of Selectmen can take action on this tonight. Um, and I am going to make a motion, and I would say during discussion, if you could just give a brief summary because the public may not understand what we're talking about, okay? So I will make a motion that we allow the Girl Scout troop to place their pinwheels in a planter on the Old Town Hall porch for, is it one week? What's the time for one week?
Yeah, we weren't looking for longer than a week.
Okay, uh, so that's my motion that would, that the board grant permission to do this.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Dushkowski.
Would you just give a, a quick description of what these pinwheels are for the public?
Sure. So, um, Girl Scouts and Girl Guides internationally celebrate World Thinking Day on February twenty second annually. This is the birthday of, um, Lord, and I, I think it's Lord Baden Powell and his wife Lady Baden Powell, um, are the founders of Girl Guides. And so this year's theme of World Thinking Day is peace building. And so one of the projects that the, uh, troop did, um, this past weekend together, um, because we're, we're remote, uh, we are doing things online, but separately. Um, they built, uh, peace pinwheels and this is a large project. You can actually Google pinwheels for peace and you'll come up with a lot of information. Uh, but they are basically small pinwheels made on a pencil with, uh, paper. The girls write messages of peace, um, and how they want to be able to spread peace within themselves, within their homes and within their community. Um, and so then those are put on display to help spread peace to the community. Um, and it's always great to find a place where we can do that publicly. Um, and we figured where we're going to be there on Saturday for the food drive. Um, it would be great to be able to get that up at Town Hall as well because the girls don't have a whole lot of visibility right now during the pandemic. And, um, they'd really like to celebrate that.
I'm sorry, I said, thank you and thank you for reaching out about it. Any further, um, input under discussion?
No, I just want to add that, uh, I, I'm going to agree with this.
Hearing no further discussion, let's take it to a vote. Selectmen Pacheco.
Hi.
Selectmen Goulart.
Hi.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an I. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The girls will be excited.
Absolutely. Anything else under public input?
Mrs. Graff, Mr. Chair, I do have something.
Sure, just your name and address, sir.
Sure, Bob Henry, two one four four Pleasant Street, Dayton. I just wanted to, uh, say with Mr. Ferry, I drive about a hundred fifty to two hundred miles a day. And through every snowstorm I've had to go out in, Dayton is always welcomed in the morning. I I get my, I get very too confident because the roads in Dayton are so well. As I leave Dayton, I I get into some other situations, but on the way home as well. I'm coming home from Wall fam or, uh, most recently in, uh, Wellesley Hills. Um, I was happy when I hit the Dayton line. So, so kudos to that whole team publicly. Uh, also, I wanted to, uh, you know, thank, uh, Board of Health of everything they're doing for us. We appreciate it. Uh, CBS, I did get an email from CBS this morning in quarter of eight, uh, forty two sites at CBS. Uh, we're offering a thousand, uh, doses each and, uh, that was the closest to us was Taunton on Witherspoon Street or, uh, Fall River, Seacong were the only other ones that were closed. There were Dartmouth and, uh, Brockton. But, um, but keep the push and thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you. Too bad the Board of Health wasn't here to hear that. We'll, we'll pass it along, Mr. Armric, for sure. Okay, uh, anything else? Hearing none? So, I'm sorry. My apologies. There's like a bit of a delay. Um, Selectmen Pacheco, do you mind reading the scheduled announcements, sir?
No, I don't mind. Uh, this is six forty five already? Jeez.
It is.
Town Hall, Town Hall and Old Town Hall are closed to the public. All Council on Aging primetime and library programs that are currently scheduled at Old Town Hall will be canceled until further notice. The library will still offer tip side service. Payment. Payment or correspondence can be left either in the outside drop box located by payment or correspondence can be left either in the outside drop box located by the walkway at the entrance to Town Hall or the window from the Old Town Hall. Payments may also be made by mail and online via the town town website, www.dighton-ma.gov. The Town of Dayton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on March 20, 2021, located at Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue, lower level as a drive through. There is a townwide parking ban in effect through April 1st, 2021. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. The Dayton Library has tax forms. Please call and hit for any forms you need, and they will bring them to you to your car as part of the tube side service. Their number is five oh eight six six nine six four two one. The Dayton Public Library has two upcoming virtual events that you can register for. Unsinkable by James Sullivan, World War II Navy Ship Including Three Fodder the Sailors on Tuesday, March 9th at 7:00 PM. Please register with the Department of Public Library. And the second event is attracting birds, butterflies, and other beneficials on Thursday, March 18th at 6:30. Please register with the Dayton Public Library.
Thank you so much, sir. May I, may I make a suggestion to the board for us to take something out of order if possible? If you're amenable, we have and I should have put this, and this is an oversight on my behalf, and I apologize. I meant to put the letter of support or non-opposition, whichever, for Pure Oasis LLC under scheduled appointments. That did not happen. Mr. Evans, I believe, is here. He is the, I believe, owner of Pure Oasis LLC, which is and he'll explain what his company does. But would the board be amenable to taking this out of order?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we go to new business. I believe it is D, item D, item D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and a very patient Mr. Evans, thank you. Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrapos is an aye. Mr. Evans, thank you so much for being present this evening. It was a pleasure speaking to you, I believe, a week or two weeks ago about your plan, your business plan. And I'm very excited about it. And I did request this to be on the agenda. Did you want to sort of present your, you know, a summary of your business plan to the board, what you intend to do?
Thank you, Selectmen, for having me here tonight. I'd like to acknowledge my business partner is here as well, Kevin Hart. We're pretty excited about the project because I think it will be a dynamic project for the Town of Dayton. And what we're looking to do is to create what's called the Southeast Cannabis Cultivation Center. And we are in the process of purchasing the property at six two zero Spring Street in Dayton, which was formerly a textile mill. The property itself is about 500,000 square feet, and it sits on another close to a million square feet of land. And we're looking to repurpose the property to create a cultivation center for not only our existing cannabis business, but we also have interest from several additional cannabis businesses. So we'll have kind of a conglomerate of multiple cannabis businesses doing cultivation out of the site based on the fact that it is so sizable, and there is a surplus of of space there that will suit additional tenants as well as the existing tenants and also create upwards of 400 jobs in the area.
That's awesome. Thank you, sir. Just to, and I feel like you touched upon this, but I just wanted to clarify for the public. So the only thing in your plan right now is to have other cannabis cultivation entities possibly in that facility as well?
No, so right now we have a retail location in Boston. We were the first Economic Empowerment designated cannabis company in the state to open in a major city. And so we have a retail location in Boston. We're in the process of opening two additional sites in Boston. So we will total by the end of the year. We expect to have host agreements for three. We'll have one in operation and two in the pipeline in Boston, so a total of three. And we will need our own cultivation facility for that. So we're going to outfit a cultivation facility at that at Spring Street of roughly 50,000 square feet. And then we have other people who have approached us already. We have a pending letter of intent for another tenant that will be another 50. And again, we anticipate that in total, we'll have our own 50,000 square feet and then another potential 250 to 300,000 of additional tenants for, again, multiple usage of the site.
The only reason I ask that question is because I think the only use permissible under the current zoning at six twenty Spring Street is cultivation.
Exactly.
You know, retail would require a zoning change, which my personal opinion is it's a residential area, so we shouldn't that there. So that was where the my question.
So no, I, there is no intent to have any retail cultivation, say, any retail sales at the location. It would strictly be a cultivation center.
And and it would support your other retail facilities in other towns.
It will support our retail endeavors in the city of Boston.
Thank you. That was my question. Colleagues?
Yeah, so I have a question. I grew up in the 60s, so I'm quite familiar with the product. You'd be growing there. Will you be making any edibles or anything like that, or you're just growing the cannabis?
So we look to be the a vertically integrated company, and by that we'll be cultivating, but we'll also be doing what's called product manufacturing. And product manufacturing is kind of an umbrella term that represents either creating edibles. It could be, you know, there are a number of different products under that category. But edibles are a growing segment of the market. So yes, we would be producing edibles there as well.
And your product will be for recreational and medicinal?
No, so we only have a license in the state for recreational, which we also term adult use. So we would just be producing products for adult use.
Thank you.
Selectmen Goulart, you have the floor.
Now, what happened to the business we approved for that plant?
I'm so glad.
This?
I'm so glad you asked. So that was my question after I met with Mr. Evans. It prompted myself and Mrs. Brady to do some digging, and I actually reached back out to Mr. Kinnahan, who was, I guess, the recipient, his business of the host community agreement. And they have no intention of opening. And part of the reason is because the the owner at the time wanted them to lease or rent or buy more space than what their business model would have entailed. They really wanted to start small and ramp up. And so that that completely fell through. And before I put this on the agenda, Mrs. Brady and I had spoke, and that's what prompted me to reach out back out to Mr. Kinnahan, who I'm still in touch with. But he did say, and I went back to Mr. Evans about this, he did express interest if Mr. Evans were amenable to renting a space or leasing a space once Mr. Evans and Pure Oasis, excuse me, or whoever will be the owner of the Spring Street Mill is the new owner.
Okay, so my my only other comment is to both Mr. Evans and Mr. Hart. When we met with Mr. Kinnahan and his proposal was made, and we did finally grant him the letter that he was asking for, the initial presentation, I did not vote in support of it because they had proposed bringing trucks out onto Spring Street, which is the street that faces that little park across from the plant. The what we worked out was that any vehicles entering and leaving the plant would enter onto Warner Boulevard and not come out onto Spring Street. So I would also ask that you keep that in mind because the residents around there, because it is such a residential area, and it's like with the little park, they were very concerned about truck traffic and everything else on Spring Street. So I know you have access to Warner Boulevard, which is a direct route to if you're going 44 or wherever. But please just keep that in mind so that the neighbors will you'll all be good neighbors. Let me put it that way. Thank you.
My last question, and I think it's not probably not related, or maybe it is related to your request. There is a really pretty building in the back. I know some of them have been torn down, but there's one kind of alone by itself, you know, far off to the side.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah. Is there any plan for that? Is that part of the business model?
Not necessarily, but you know, just from an architectural standpoint, you know, it just represents so much history that, you know, we would love to repurpose it in some way. Or if not, just leave it alone and rehab it. But, you know, there's a lot of glass there. It's a very unique structure. That's the one by the water, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Is it by the what? Yeah, I think there's some, there's, there is something back there, a stream or a brook or something.
Exactly, exactly.
There it is.
Yeah, we were all drawn to it. And anecdotally, we said it might make for a good brewery just because, you know, the high ceilings and it just has so much character. It would be great as residential loss, but that wouldn't work in the zoning. But we want to try and repurpose it some way because it just stands out.
Oh, along those, along those same lines, since we're talking about the general architecture of that building, just a comment, if you can, please keep the clock tower. And if it can be restored, it would be great. But that's also when the west end of that mill was taken down, because it's of its deteriorating condition. They stopped just short of taking that down. But, you know, hopefully it can remain, and maybe it can be restored. But just a thought, because again, that whole area, although it's not considered a historic district, as I mentioned before, that park in the area around there, that's Frederick Law Olmstead. And so that's, yes. So although some of those trees obviously are gone, but that whole area was part of his work. Just, you know, a little history there.
Interesting.
Do either of my colleagues have any further questions?
I don't.
No.
And, you know, I did request a letter of support. I know traditionally we had done a letter of non-opposition. It looks like we ended up with the letter of non-opposition language, but I just wanted my colleagues to know if we want to do a letter of support and change out the word non-opposition for support, that I would be amenable to that as well. I'm really excited. Part of the reason I I got so excited about this project was initially when Mr. Evans did tell me that the plan was to purchase the mill because that had been a big sticking point for other entities that had expressed interest before. And I do want to go, we have a resident, Mr. Woods, who actually is a resident in the area. Mr. Woods, sir, you have the floor. If you don't mind just giving your name and address, sir.
Robert Woods, one fifty-eight Chase Street. And I'm also on the planning board. And I'm pretty sure that they're probably gonna have to get a variance because they're within a quarter of a mile of the playground. And I'm gonna look up the bylaw tomorrow, and I have a little more time, but there could be a stipulation too because of the church. So they may have to apply for a variance.
That's a good point.
I think, I think as far as the church, it has to be 500 feet, I think, and it's more.
I know it's a quarter of a mile from the playground. And from the playground to the door at six twenty Spring Street is point two miles. So where are they gonna draw the line and figure out the distance? I I can't answer that question, but it's something that needs to be looked into. And I think I heard the gentleman say that they're gonna be purchasing the facility?
Correct.
From the Feeny Brothers?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods, can I ask you a quick question if you don't mind, sir?
Sure.
You have a pretty good pulse of the residents in the area and just the village in general. Just hearing what you heard tonight, what is your sense of like the palatability of the project as it was presented this evening?
No, I I think it's a great location for this. And as long as they're not gonna be a retail outlet, then I don't believe any of the residents will be too concerned. One of the main concerns is for me, and I probably have a little more experience than Ken, but
I doubt it.
The odor should be controllable somehow through filter systems or whatever. Because, you know, if you drive by the one on Mazzone Boulevard behind TJ Maxx, you can smell it pretty good. So that may be a concern. And to be honest, the wind usually blows my way. You know. But no, I I think it's a great idea, and it's a great location. And I did hear him mention something about possibly creating something that backbuilding for our residents. That would take a zoning change by a two-thirds majority, and I don't believe the residents of North Dayton would be in favor of that. So as long as you keep it industrial, because that is a great piece of industrial land. You have good water from the city of Taunton. You have good electricity from the TMLP, and you have sewer. You ain't gonna get a better deal anywhere. Okay, so I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Mr. Chairman, one other question. Mr. Evans, I know of at least one business operating way, way out, I'm gonna call it in the far western part of that plant. Will tenants, other than, will tenants that are there now still have space?
Yes, absolutely. We're not looking to displace any of the tenants. In fact, we're attracting more tenants. And again, the building is way more of a profile than we actually need, and so that creates the opportunity to bring back to bring other cultivators to the location as well as the the other applicant that you gave a host agreement to. They could potentially come back as a new tenant as well.
And there'd still be room for existing tenants.
There is, the the property is so large that, you know, we would have tenants for a while in terms of trying to fill as many spaces of square footage that we have available. And there's, again, as you mentioned, there's a whole nother, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the building that they tore down was another 500,000 square feet.
Yeah, that was a big one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did anybody else have any questions? And I I just want the public to be aware, when I ask this, I am, yes, asking my colleagues, but I am also asking the general public as well. We did get a clarification from our building commissioner, and he wrote in the chat, if the playground is indeed less than a fourth of a mile, then zoning relief would be required. So Mr. Woods would be correct. That is accurate. Thank you, sir. Sirs. Did anybody have any other questions regarding the plan or the letter of non-opposition? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion to pursuant, I guess I'll say, not to approve, pursuant to the letter of non-opposition for a marijuana cultivation facility.
So is it?
Mrs. Goulart?
Is that the same as the letter of support? Because that's what the agenda says. I want to make sure we do this correctly and don't get accused of violating any rules because the agenda says one thing. All right, so what's the, so what's the answer?
Well, so I did request a letter of support. The the actual letter that's in the packet is a letter of non-opposition. And I'm amenable to doing either. I think we have done a letter of support before. It was for Green Harbor, which didn't pan out. And then since then, like for One Connection, we did do a letter of non-opposition. And this was actually the template Mrs. Brady used was the One Connection Corp. template that had been approved by the state, and they did, I believe, receive their license or their provisional license, or it was accepted.
So if the motion is exactly what the wording is on this agenda, is that, is that sufficient, Mr. Evans and Mr. Hart? Letter of support, is that?
Yes, ideally, we would love a letter of support.
It's stronger than a letter of non-opposition. A letter of non-opposition is just saying, we're not gonna stand in the way of them getting their license and pursuing opening a facility. A letter of support, I think, more symbolizes, because it really is a symbol, that we are encouraging this venture, and we do support it enthusiastically. So it's the, it's the, you know, it's the whim whim of the board, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we issue a letter of support for Pure Oasis LLC for their proposed operation at six twenty Spring Street, not Dayton.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Brady, under discussion, before the board signs it, if we could just switch out where it says non-opposition, we add the word support.
Well, do I apologize?
No, not at all. Not our, we've got a lot going on, so I appreciate it. No, not at all, not our, we've got a lot going on, so I appreciate it. We get the business right, that's the important part. Hearing no further discussion. Uh, Mr. Mullin, actually, Town Administrator Mullin, did you want to say a few words, I'm sorry? About this uh, venture?
So, so no, I didn't have anything other than it's an exciting venture and I'm looking forward to uh, to joining the team and. I like really helping, hopefully to like usher it through and working with the board to do that. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. Uh, let's take it to a vote. Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrappos is also an aye. Uh, we look forward to working with you hand in glove, uh, Mr. Hart and Mr. Evans. Um, and anything you need uh, from the board, uh, you will have that support. Uh, just please, don't be a stranger and we'll be working, you'll probably actually end up working closely with our town administrator, Mike Mullin. Uh, he starts on March eighth, um, so take it easy on him, okay?
We're excited. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Next on our agenda after that excitement, uh, we have a uh. Discussion to have about the public buildings budget. Um, we need to include a replacement equipment line. The reason this is on the agenda is because. We already voted, I think, to approve. The departmental request under public buildings, if that's correct, Mrs. Brady. And we now need to amend it by adding this replacement equipment line. Okay.
That's correct.
It's going to take me a while to flip through to find this documentation if it's in the packet. Does someone else mind? Like giving the specifics on. Uh, how the price will change, price, how the uh, total will change?
Do we know what the dollars are? How much money are we going to put in the line? Do we know that?
Mrs. Brady, I don't think we do.
I'm just looking for it right now.
Oh, no, okay. Sorry, Mrs. Brady.
I'm sorry.
No, no, take your time.
I don't think we do. I don't think we have that.
So can we wait until we have that and then act on this? Cause we're going to do all the budget work in our March meetings. We may need to have like a s- special meeting one week in between, perhaps, depending on our pace. Um, is that okay, Mrs. Brady?
Yes, that works.
Okay, all right. And then we'll have a better idea of what, what it may be as well. Do we know which depart? Oh, do we know who brought this up? Like, um, was this a request regarding like highway equipment or building equip? Like, do we know who brought this to our attention? Was it me?
Yeah, I believe we had a discussion where everybody has their own replacement equipment lines for their office.
That's it.
Office equipment and we were just trying to centralize it.
So what we need to do, colleagues, is. If the board is amenable, so that should be prefaced. Um, we would need to calculate the lines from each department for replacement equipment. And then put that into the replacement equipment line in the public buildings um, budget. But if the board's not amenable, we can keep it as, as is. I just thought it was easier and it made more sense. So you know exactly what is being requested and possibly going to be spent specifically for. Um, replacement equipment in one consolidated area. But I'm willing to hear, um, if anyone else has any thoughts on this. Selectmen Goulart, you were on finance committee for quite a while.
Yeah, my thought on this is, um, I would leave department equipment in the departments. But what I would put in this line is equipment in a building that is shared, no one department. For example, that big copier in the, in town hall, everybody and their grandmother uses that.
Okay.
The postage meter is another one. Yes, they allocate their postage, but there was, I, I believe, a rental fee we're paying Pitney Bowes off. Whoever owns that equipment. So, um, I would be looking at um, public buildings. Replacement equipment would be shared equipment. Because if we leave the other equipment in the departments, we have a better handle on what it's costing to actually operate that department.
Okay. That's a good point. The only reason what made me bring this up, Selectmen Goulart, was you know how we have that newer, it's sort of newer in the last few fiscal years? The um, data processing line? So certain departments started, um, and I, and I agree with this. Cause you want to know how much it's costing for your data processing and to keep up, you know, the firewalls and all, all the IT work. Um, they started putting like, for example, assessors, software fees, Board of Selectmen, website fees. So we started putting that there. Um, so that was what prompted me to think, oh, well, maybe we should do this. For buildings as well. But I think your, your example makes, you know, totally, total sense to me. So that's fine.
There, there is, if we really look at it, there, there are a number of pieces of, I'll call them shared equipment. That really doesn't end up in any, anyone's budget and you can't allocate it to a department. But it certainly is a cost of doing business overall. Uh, and, and those, those examples that I used, those are biggies. So, but I, yeah, I think it's good to add the line and um. We can certainly determine what are we paying per year for that big copier? And um. Uh, the rental or whatever fee we're paying for that postage, that big kneeling center thing we got. And um, things of that nature, I guess.
Okay, we can put that together.
Okay.
Do we want to take a vote on that or are we, we clear? What's the uh, you know, fancy of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion. Did I hear a dog bark?
I'll put my.
Yeah, that, that dog is speaking up in favor of the Beagle Bill. That's what this is about. Let that dog speak. Um, Mr. Chairman, um, I move that we. Insert a replacement equipment line in the public buildings budget and uh. Determine what dollars should be budgeted for the upcoming year and for a future meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Uh, Selectmen Goulart, your vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Abby, no, I'm just kidding. And Selectmen Zagrappos is also an aye. Under Selectmen's reports, I actually got some good news. I'm, I apologize that it's not on the agenda, but it came in hot off the presses. I had uh, informed the board several weeks ago that myself, Mrs. Brady, uh, Sergeant Cronin. And Chief McDonald had sat together and applied for three different grants. And the biggest one that we had applied for is the cybersecurity awareness training grant. Which means we can actually train people in the town on cybersecurity and different, you know, strategies and things like that. And we actually got it, so I will read the email. Um, and I will forward this to everyone. Uh, congratulations. We're pleased to announce that Dayton has been selected to participate in the cybersecurity awareness grant program. Which will make end user cybersecurity training, assessment and simulation tools available to your organization. Please find an award letter from security Curtis and Wood attached. The first step in accepting this award will be to identify the local coordinator for your organization. Congratulations, Town Administrator Mullin, on that. The local coordinator, the local coordinator is your organization's point person. Who will oversee the setup, execution and weekly coordination with our team at E O T S S. Um, and you will receive an email on Thursday, February twenty fifth, um, with an e-sign agreement. So I'll make sure that gets done. So we just need to tell them it will be the town administrator. There will be a webinar on Wednesday, March third. Um, so uh, Mrs. Brady and I, uh, Town Administrator Mullin, you will not have started by then. Mrs. Brady and I, if she's free, so I'll only speak for myself, I will attend it for sure. Um, hopefully, Mrs. Brady will join me if she's available. Um, and I will also uh, let you know.
How much money?
So it's not money. They put the program on.
Oh, oh, okay, fine.
So it's literally a training program. So it's like, cool, actually, the use. And they say, um. So they just go over like what it covers, like they're going to send us simulated phishing emails, um, in order to better understand. Cybersecurity posture and which employees fall for the traps. So they will do an assessment based on that. And then I think what will happen is once they have that data back. Um, then they will analyze it. And then I think they'll probably tailor the training program to what they find. Um, in those results. So it's really exciting. I think it is um. Directly in line with our commitment to, you know, having better IT, to having better cybersecurity. Um, we have a network administrator now in Chris Rauner, um, who is our point person. Um, and that brings me to my other point, Town Administrator Mullin. Actually, what I'm thinking is maybe Chris Rauner should be our local coordinator because he was very instrumental in submitting the applications. And he also knows our uh, network uh, very well. So maybe let's circle back you and I on this. And we can, we can pull rope in, uh, Mr. Rauner and figure out who should be the local coordinator.
Yeah, that is perfectly fine with me, Mr. Kevin.
You might be, we might have spared you on this one, uh, Mr. Mullin. So next, um, I did just want to give a brief update, give me one moment on our. The long journey to the safety zone on Pleasant Street and adjacent streets. Um, Mr. Luis Di Olivera from Serpide did get back to me. He has forwarded me the forty page technical memorandum for the Dayton Safety Zone in the areas that we have previously approved. Um, he did ask us if, if he can be of further assistance. So obviously, my first question is, thank you so much. Like, we really appreciate your hard work on the memorandum. What are we doing with this now? So I think what needs to happen is, and he'll get back to me when he's back from vacation on Monday. I think we need to give this to Mass DOT because they are the approval authority in terms of the signs. But the thing is, in the technical memorandum, it states that the actual placement of the signs. Should be the decision of the Board of Selectmen. So it's a bit of a loop right now. And um, I just wanted everyone to know, especially the Pleasant Street residents. I know the Onriks are on the call, or at least Bob is still. We are working on it. We have our marching orders in terms of the technical memorandum. I just need to know who, to whom we need to submit this technical memorandum to. Um, in order to get it accepted. And we may need to bring this back to the Board of Selectmen in March to decide the signs. And they lay out a couple of plans in the memorandum, which I will forward to you. And we need to basically decide which plan we like for the placement of the signs. Does that make sense?
Has Mr. Ferry seen the report yet?
Yeah, Mr. Ferry, are you still on?
Hey, if he's.
Oh, no, he's not on. He did.
Sign it to him, he's not here.
He wasn't going to wait. Um, Mr. Ferry was on the email, Selectmen Goulart. So I, you know, I assume he's going to read it when he has a moment. I don't know if he has already, though. I did skim through it. Um, but again, more questions than answers. So we will get that clarity in the next few weeks on how we need to proceed.
Yeah, and I think he's probably our best local technical guy to tell us. When we go to DOT or if he goes to DOT or whatever recommendations he has, he may want some changes made to the proposed plan, so.
Correct, yeah. So this is actually good because it'll give us some time and it gives him time to go through it. If he has any, um, I've been keeping him busy and I apologize. We've been working on a shared Winter Streets and Spaces grant. Uh, with Jonathan Gale, our ADA coordinator. So um, I think having a week or two um, for him to go through it will be good in terms of bringing it back to the board. And maybe he'll have some kind of guidance for us. And we might hear back from Serpide by then, too. So we are towards the end of it. Um, and I just want to thank everyone. I know it's been, um. You know, it's taken some time and we did have the town administrator leave. I mean, she had been really pivotable, pivotal in getting everything done before that. Um, so there was a bit of a learning curve for us. Um, but we are working on it and it, it were towards the end. So I'm really excited. And the good thing is. For the next safety zone, if there's going to be a next safety zone, we now know. Who we need to contact and what needs to be done on every step of the process. So it shouldn't take this long. Um, if there is going to be a future safety zone somewhere else. The last, uh, actually, Selectmen Goulart, I don't want to step on your thunder, so you have the floor.
Um, okay, so since we're on a roll with Serpide. We certainly get our dues money back for being members of Serpide. Um, on February twenty third, uh, Bill Napolitano from Serpide. I met with members of our MVP slash HMP, uh, municipal vulnerability plan slash hazard mitigation plan core team. Uh, and this relates to that joint project I mentioned that I had been working on last fall with Bill. And Nancy Durfee, the Somerset Town Planner, and Colleen Brown, the Swansea uh, conservation uh, agent. The, Mr. Napolitano showed the map of the three towns. And he explained how uh, the four of us working together last fall came up with and ranked. The highest priorities that there are relative to potential uh, problems, depending upon the area we're in. The um. Large map. Will, we are going to get a copy of it. And what I said was that we would like to put it in the vestibule. So that it's available for anyone to look at, because the vestibule at town hall is not locked, as you know. If there isn't sufficient room there, we would mount it in the foyer, but it would be facing out. So you could actually be in the vestibule and look at it. Obviously, we saw it on the Zoom screen, but I think it's going to mean a lot more if people see. This is a huge map. And it's got the color codes and it indicates areas where there are clusters of concern. For example, town of Dayton, town of Somerset. The Dayton Somerset line on Elm Street. Where that intersection is, uh, the Labor and Vane Brook comes down through Dayton and there is local flooding. But the big concern is the Somerset reservoir, they call it the dam. When you look at it, it, it's a big dam. And they are undertaking an engineering study of that dam, the reservoir. Because there are concerns about its structure. I mean, we talked about Elm Street, this, you know, that's a little dam compared to what we're talking about, this reservoir. And obviously, this is very a strategic area because if anything happens to that dam, especially in that northwest corner. That's the town of Dayton. And if that dam should breach, you can imagine the water that's going to rush towards the river. And it's going to flood in three directions because only west is higher. So uh, when this map is available, it'll be there. And the public is invited when they come into town hall to drop something off. I should say when, if they enter the vestibule, they can look at it too. And if they have questions, they can get back to uh, me or uh, members of the team. But right now. What was the work that was done by Dayton Somerset and Swansea has been attached to each of our towns MVP. Uh, HMP plans and that's now on file with the state. So, and these prioritized sites are there. So the next step will be Somerset is uh, working on grants to get that dam studied. We will be looking at areas that we can work with Somerset on, and it could be that northwest corner where we come together. We're also looking at with Swansea, the headwaters of the Coles River, which is actually up behind a Rouge Farm. We actually saw it when we were doing a solar farm site visit. But anyhow, I just wanted to give you all an update. When that map is available, we'll have more information. And we just want you to know that the whole intent of this uh, tri-town. Collaborative is so that we can apply for grants because the state is really pushing funding collaborative regional grants. So uh, fingers crossed that we can get some money and do some things and maybe look at our own dam with some of that money. So that's what happened at that meeting.
And the quote of the evening is little damn. I really appreciated that, Selectmen Goulart. Okay. Um, I want to call a brief two minute recess simply to, if anyone needs to get more water, use the facilities. Um, and then we'll reconvene two, three minutes, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Just wait another few seconds for Selectmen Goulart.
All set.
Okay. And very briefly, I did just want to add, under Selectmen's reports, the open space and recreation plan was approved by the Open Space Committee. I am, I have forwarded a copy both to the Planning Board Office Manager, but also to our executive assistant. Because Bill Napolitano of Serpide has stated that part of the ability of the report to be accepted by DCS through the state is that it needs acceptance letters from planning and the Board of Selectmen. So I did forward a copy of it to them, and I did also request that it be put on their agenda for acceptance, or not. You know, it's up to the two boards. And Bill, Mr. Napolitano, excuse me, did explain to me that he fully expects the state to have revisions, like suggestions. And so if that is the case, we will, of course, pass those along to the respective boards that get a say in this as well, okay?
Okay.
So that will be coming, and it's some great light bedtime reading. So you'll be very excited about that.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention to Mr. Mullen, this, getting our program together, MVP-HMP, that was something that Mrs. Aaronstein did. And when she left and Mr. Napolitano contacted me, because I was on, I am on the Stormwater Committee, I kind of took that over. So after you get in, and the dust settled and everything else, I will be bringing this to you. So you're gonna be actively involved in what happens down the road on this, okay? But don't worry about it. You're not gonna get dumped on you the day you arrive.
I know, and that sounds awesome, Selectmen Goulart. Like, and Ms. Brady actually, like, sent me the invite for yesterday's meeting, and I was hoping to actually join, but I was held up on another thing. But I'm looking forward to it. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, too.
Thank you.
And the last thing, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank everyone, a sincere heartfelt thanks to Mrs. Brady, our ADA coordinator, COD Coordinator Jonathan Gale, and of course, our Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry, for their invaluable instructive help on the Shared Winter Streets and Spaces grant application that we will be submitting at the end of the week. It was so collaborative. I am not an ADA expert, obviously. I'm also not a highway or roadway or any of that traffic expert. And the way that everybody came together to provide expertise and assistance with the writing was really helpful. And just so the public is aware that this grant, the focus of it is primarily to improve roadway sidewalk and crosswalk access. So for disabled folks, also for our seniors who may be having difficulty with some of the sidewalks and things like that, a lot of curb cuts, and ramps will be installed. There will be crosswalks installed. There will also be crosswalks painted. And so we have requested about $118,000 to make those improvements. This also is directly in line with our Board of Selectmen's five-year plan to make all-town facilities ADA compliant. And so really, I just want to thank everyone for coming together and focusing on this. It was really, really, I learned so much. And I'm just really grateful for everybody's help. So thank you very much. And we will know at the end of March if we receive the grant. So I'll keep everyone updated. And if there's no more items under Selectmen's reports, I'd like to move to awarding the contract for the Brick Street culvert. Bear with me just a moment. Sorry, everyone. Is this, Mrs. Brady, this is the documentation from Mass DOT regarding the awarding authority pre-qualification confirmation? And we have to choose one? No, you're muted. I'm sorry, Mrs. Brady.
I'm sorry. Tom has recommended the lowest bidder, Luciano's Excavating.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, do you have any questions about the recommendation or anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we award the contract for the Brick Street Culvert Project Two, Luciano's Excavating Incorporated, Ten Court Street, Totten. Total contract $259,200, as recommended by Superintendent Ferry.
We have a motion and a second. Under discussion, I just wanted to state, I'm very impressed. I don't know if this is typical of a culvert project or any sort of highway project, but I see here that the project value is valued at $320,730, but the bid for the work is 259. So I think that's pretty cool.
Yeah. DER-CRMA grant funding. That's double nice. Someone else's money.
And just so the public is aware, the description of the project is to replace an undersized twin CMP culvert with a three-sided precast concrete box that fully meets the Mastering Crossing Standards culvert and/or bridge work, for culvert and/or bridge work. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
Flare.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zografos is an aye. Old habits die hard.
So you gave us time off, and we broke the chain.
We forgot everything.
Yeah.
Next, we're gonna discuss the Historical Commission LLC grant and designate a signer. Does someone want to take the lead? It's gonna take, it keeps taking me forever to scroll back and forth. I apologize.
I actually believe that this is not the Historical Commission LLC grant. I believe it.
Is it the Cultural Council?
It's the Cultural Council.
Okay. That's why I was so, I kept flipping and didn't find anything besides the historical marker. I'm sorry. Mr. Pacheco, sir, since it's addressed to you, do you mind just, you know, if you want to present it or just read it?
Yeah, this is, I can read the whole thing if you want.
Sure.
So this is from the Mass Cultural Council. The contract includes a signature page with the amount of the allocation, $6,000, dates of service, July 30, 2020 to June 30, 2021, and a place to sign. You only need to sign it, include an email address and make any corrections if needed. The second page is the scope of the service that defines how the content to be expended following Mass Cultural Council regulations. Lastly, the signature authorization page is a required form for all contracts with state agencies that clearly identify the personnel persons authorized to sign contracts for a vendor, in this case, your municipality. So I've been asked to sign it only because at the time, the application was I was the chairperson of it. Not only this would go to the current chair, so we're gonna need a motion that allows me to sign this contract, since it's addressed.
Okay, I will make a motion that Selectman Kenneth Pacheco be authorized to sign this Mass Cultural Council contract for the Town of Dyton Board of Selectmen.
And I'm going to step down and second that motion. Discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zografos is also an aye. Next on our agenda this evening is an open meeting law complaint dated February 12, 2021. Bear with me just a moment, everyone. I think I have it actually, right here. This is from Patrick Higgins of Swansea, Massachusetts, of Patrick Higgins and Associates. It's a complaint made against the entire organization, so the Dyton Board of Selectmen, and the specific persons are all members. And the date of the alleged violation occurred January 25, 2021. And the description of the alleged violation is as follows. All members of the Dyton Board of Selectmen violated the open meeting law by entering entering in a legal executive session to discuss an update on performance evaluations for non-union personnel. See agenda attached and video of the meeting can be viewed at, and there's a link. And then what action do you want the public body to take in response of your complaint to learn and comply with the open meeting law? And it's signed Patrick Higgins dated February 12, 2021. My impression is that, because it's not very clear from the description of the alleged violation, that he believes we discussed someone's performance, a non-union personnel employee's performance in executive session, which did not happen. Does anyone else have any thoughts on how we want to respond to this? Selectmen Pacheco or Selectmen Goulart? Those were my thoughts. That is, it's a misunderstanding. It was a general update on the process of the performance evaluations. And I was reporting to the board, because we don't have a town administrator, and I had to do the performance evaluation. So I think it's a misunderstanding.
Okay, I was gonna ask for clarification, because I wasn't sure what we did. And if we were really gonna talk about a person, we would have had to give him 48 hours' notice, so forth, so on, so.
Which we have done.
I didn't know what the violation, the alleged violation was. Now that you've explained it, I don't believe there was a violation. Because, quite frankly, I think any of us would have said, hey, wait a minute, we can't talk about so-and-so, because we didn't notify him. So, but I don't think we violated by talking about the process we used.
No.
So is the question that we, that should have been a part of the public meeting, not an executive board meeting, is that what his concern is? That update and performance evaluations could have been done in an open meeting?
So the reason I responded the way I did, Selectmen Pacheco, even though he didn't write it here, is he had sent, I want to say either an email, or actually, it might have been in the chat at the last meeting for the last open meeting law complaint that we were discussing. And he wrote in the chat before he left the meeting, I mean, he sent me a message, which is technically a public record. He said, "You can't enter into executive session because, to discuss someone's performance evaluation." And I read it, and obviously, by the time I read it, he, you know, the meeting was over and he had left. But I sincerely think he believes that we discussed someone's performance evaluation in the executive session. So I think it's a misunderstanding. Yeah. But, but you know, you know what we can say going forward is, next time, if for whatever reason, we don't have a town administrator, you know, next, and that's not gonna happen, but we can just say in our response that we would give the update on the process in open session. And I think that that is, I think that can clarify it. Is everyone in agreement? Selectmen Goulart, I didn't mean to cut you off. My apologies.
I was just saying, he was here earlier tonight. Is he gone? Has he left?
He's left.
Okay. Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to respond. It's unfortunate. When he sent that email to you, he didn't hang around long enough, because we could have said, what specifically do you mean? And that's not what we mean. I'm almost thinking that the response should include that we did not discuss anyone's performance.
Yep.
Because we were discussing a process. And we are aware that if we were going to discuss an individual, we would have had to give them 48 hours' notice. So it indicates we know something about that law, and that in the future, a update on the process will be given in open session. I think that's the best we can do. Because again, I had trouble figuring out what we did, and I don't think we violated anything. And since he's not here, I think that's the best we can do, is to send him a response with that kind of information in it. And as a matter of, I will make a motion that we send such a response to Mr. Higgins.
I'll second the motion.
Mrs. Brady, did you get that?
I did. I got it.
Thank you.
I'll put that together.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then if we could also just add, because I think it's important to highlight, like, the corrective measure, if there is one. And I think we just say, like we did about the live streaming, going forward, we will, if, you know, this happens again, we would just give an update on the process in open session.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Let's take it to a vote if there's no more discussions. Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zografos is also an aye. Next on our agenda is a license for drainage work on Brook Street. Selectmen Goulart, if you have, you know, have the right page up on your agenda, on me, do you mind opening this up?
Okay. There isn't, I don't have anything to put out there. Attorney Costa is working on the license. This is the document that I had originally referred to as a reverse easement. This is the document that will allow Grasshopper Solar to build a, we call it a little bridge, over the ditch on Brook Street, so that they can access the property where they're going to build the solar farm, and that the license will allow them to maintain the ditch in accordance with specifications that will be enforced by Superintendent Ferry. All I'm doing is waiting for that document to come in from Attorney Costa. I'll look it over. I'll make sure the board sees it, because we're gonna have to put it on an agenda and vote. I did hear from Mr. Ahmed Hakim, I think is how we pronounce his name, from Grasshopper, wanting to know if the permit is being held for the license, or if the, if we can issue the permit without the license. And my personal feeling is, to protect the town, they can't go on and work on that property without that license that has been approved by the Board of Selectmen, period. And to say, we'll issue the permit, and we haven't issued the license, we're defeating the purpose of this whole thing. So I did send an email to Attorney Costa, telling him that the developer is asking when the license will be ready. I'm hoping I will have it for the next Board of Selectmen meeting. And, but at this point, not only is the stormwater permit, but obviously, the building permit is being held. But again, we gotta protect the town. So that's what's important.
Thank you, Selectmen Goulart. Before we move on, Selectmen Pacheco, did you have any questions or comments about this?
No, it looks like we can't address it tonight anyway, so.
Yep. Thank you, Selectmen Goulart, for always keeping us updated.
Okay, you're welcome.
Next on the agenda is the To Review/Discuss an Act: The Board and Committee Handbook. I had presented this before. At that meeting, Mr. Higgins had alluded to some of the language in the open meeting law section and the public records section specifically might have been outdated. So I did ask Mrs. Kirwin to send to Attorney Costa. those specific sections and to get back to us on what he thought, if there were any changes. He did have a couple very minor changes. Mrs. Kirwin went back and made those changes. So those are presented here this evening. The rest of the handbook is the same as the last copy you got. I do just want to read Attorney Costa's email regarding this before we take a vote. He said, good morning, Leanne. I made only a few suggested edits in the section regarding the open meeting law. I tracked changes so the edit should be visible. I also only made one minor edit in section 4.9. I only reviewed the open meeting law section of the handbook as that is the section that I was requested to review. I do think this handbook is a great idea and should be an important asset to the towns, boards, and committees. So does anyone have any questions about the Board and Committee? I know it's a long document. But it will be helpful for especially newer people who want to get involved. But it can be a little intimidating to, you know, you're thinking, I have to take notes and it's a legal document. And oh, my God, what do I do? What do I include? I was, you know, a little bit intimidated when I was appointed to the Van Geisenhall Study Committee back in 2015. So I think this will help people. And I think we might see new people as a result of this. And just so the board is aware, the way it will work is, you know how when you like get appointed and you go to get sworn in, you fill out the, that you received the open meeting law copy and all that? This would also be a form. It has an acknowledgement form on the back. So the town clerk or the assistant town clerk or the clerk, Mrs. Mello, would hand them the committee handbook. They would then acknowledge it on the back, sign it, date it. And then a copy is kept with the town clerk, but also in the Board of Selectmen's office as well. So everybody knows what the expectation is as a Town of Dayton volunteer.
So will this handbook be given to those that have already been appointed?
We could, we could, I would love to. I mean, we have a Town of Dayton user list, Selectman Pacheco. And I think what we could do is send an electronic copy out to everybody. They might not get the, they might not get the paper copy, but we can ask them if they'll sign it and send it back.
Yep. Good.
Yeah, we can do that. Does anybody have anything else? I'm sorry.
No, I don't think we need to vote on this because we voted on it already, I thought. But that'd be reviewed by the town council.
I think we deferred it because we would.
Yeah, because we, you know, we want to make sure that the important sections, which really are the open meeting law, is correct and accurate and up to date. So I do believe Selectman Goulart is right. I think we did take it under advisement.
Okay.
So I will entertain motions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Board and Committee Handbook.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank you, Dr. Z, for all the work you did on this. It's very thoughtful. It's a good idea.
Thank you, sir. And as you said that, I thought this is kind of cool because now we have a new town clerk, we have a new process that they will, you know, their entire tenure, this will be normal for them to give someone, you know, this document along with the open meeting law stuff. So pretty cool. Big improvement. Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zografos is an aye. I do want to thank, from the bottom of my heart, Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kirwin, who updated it, made the edits, gave me their own edits. And I just really appreciate it. You made it a better document.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All in a day's work, Mrs. Brady. So next on the agenda is the DR Regional Preliminary Assessment Budget. I my question is, are we acting on this tonight? And the only reason I ask is because if my board colleagues are unaware, the school district typically met with Town Administrator Aaronstein before they met with us, was their process. So when we reached out to them to request a meeting, we reached out to Celeste Sullivan, the administrative assistant. She got back to us and she said that probably the best thing to do was Mr. Kitchen, the business administrator, and Dr. Azar meet with Town Administrator Mullin, and they set up a date. So I guess my question is, and that will be probably the second week of March. So are we doing anything with this or are we just pausing on this until they have a chance to have their meeting?
I think we should just take it under advisement.
Do we want to, does anyone want to read anything from it? Should we read the letter? I can't remember how we did this last year, so I apologize.
Quite frankly, even if they said this is, this is it. Uh, I would hesitate voting to accept anything because the FinCom has got a way on it. I mean, this is the biggest chunk of the town budget. And so I think taking it under advisement may be the best route to go. In all honesty, if I'm available, I would like to sit in on that meeting simply because a town administrator is new to, I'll call it, regional school finances. And considering the history, the past couple of years, I'm really interested in hearing this presentation. I asked for a copy of the budget without all of the narrative. I think only one copy came into town. I think the town accountant has it. I did ask for financials. I still don't have it. And quite frankly, this is all summary stuff. But anyhow, if, if, if I may, I would like to attend that meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
If, Mr. Mullin, if you'd send an email to me and just tell me what the date is.
Yep.
And I will, and goulart@comcast.net, I'll add it to my calendar. And if I'm free, I will certainly be there. Again, only because you're new to the process, let me, and I am, last time I know, and I don't know if we're going to meet, I'm still on that DR advisory.
I was just going to ask you.
Whatever that is. So.
Can I make a suggestion if it's okay?
Certainly.
I have no issue if Selectman Goulart wants to be in that meeting. I'm happy about that. My question is, or my suggestion is, can anyone recall? So I also recall that you're on that, the Financial Advisory Committee for the District as like the Board of, let me take that back. I don't know if you're the Board of Selectmen's liaison. Is there some way that Selectman Goulart, at least for this fiscal year, could continue on the DR? I know it might be, we might need to act at a March meeting. But I would be supportive of her continuing. It makes no sense for me, to me anyway, to have her be present in the beginning and then not be there in come April. So I want the board to think about that.
This falls under what I said when I said I was not going to run for reelection. But I have appointments that run at least until you make annual appointments in June. This is one of them. So unless the new Board of Selectmen specifically takes action to say, we don't want her to represent the Selectmen on that committee anymore, then the appointment will carry until June. And in June, the Board of Selectmen will make its annual appointments and can determine then if they want me to continue with any of those other appointments that I have. As I said, statutorily, the only one I can't do is Bristol County Financial, the Advisory Board for the County of Bristol, because you have to be a Selectman. So I don't think you have to do anything now. And if the new Board of Selectmen says, just let it go in June, you will make, you will act on reappointing people or not reappointing people. The other two members of that Advisory Committee are two finance committee members, Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Rendon, I believe. And they're still on the Finance Committee, so. One of the things I can find out is the superintendent had said before, the calling of that Advisory Committee to meet has nothing to do with the superintendent slash school administration. It's a clause in the regional agreement. And my impression is, we're a separate Advisory Committee and we find out when they're meeting and we agree with, with our counterparts in Rehoboth that we're going to attend the meeting. I guess to report back and make recommendations, so forth and so on, so. I guess that's something I can ask at that meeting about. I know Mr. and Mrs. McBride were on it. I'm not sure who was on that from the Board of Selectmen.
Was it, was it the chair?
I'm trying to think, was it Skip Fadnay? Because it seems to be he was sitting next to me at one of those meetings.
He may have been. It, I don't think it was Mr. Schwal, so if it was anyone, it probably was him. But you know who else I remember? I remember Mr. Dignan. I feel like he's on it too.
Well, he's, he would be a Finance Committee rep.
Yep.
So maybe it's not Mr. and Mrs. It may be just one of them, yeah. But they were.
But it's confusing because they both go to the meetings. So I, I understand why, yeah, I get it.
Yeah. Yeah, it could be Sue and Mike comes anyhow. But I could find that out also at that, that meeting. And I would assume that we will be told the same thing, that this isn't school administration meeting to set up, but at least I'll find out what the schedule of meetings is so that, that the Advisory Committee can attend either in whole or in pot.
Thank you. Does that work for you, Town Administrator Mullin?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree. One of the things, I mean, I have a good understanding about actually regular school districts, but I'm new to the regional school district issues. And especially, I really want to make sure, I'll actually walking in, I have a really good understanding. So yeah, like Selectwoman Goulart, if I would love if you can join me. I took a class last week with Mark Abrahams, actually. Oh, actually, no, it was this week. I'm sorry. This week seems like last week already, but Ms. Brady and I took it. Oh, and it was very helpful, but having you involved in that initial meeting would be extremely helpful.
And then the other thing, what you got was theory in operations.
Yes.
We got a history.
Oh, that's huge. That's everything right there.
And Rehoboth have a history. And it's gone on for a number of years. And you need to have that information and background too. Because right now, for the second year in a row, the Department of Education is in charge of the Dayton and Rehoboth School System, and they are involved with formulation of the budget for FY22. And if we don't reach an agreement going into town meetings, they're going to be in charge again, and they're going to be with us until we can come up with a mutually acceptable budget that we can get passed at both town meetings. So that's a whole new, that's a whole new curve to this operation.
Mrs. Goulart, last year, didn't the first meeting that this Advisory Board met, I thought both chairman of each town called a meeting. I remember them coming to Dayton, and then you guys went forward and did everything you had to do. But doesn't both chair, I remember coordinating with the chairman in Rehoboth, scheduled a meeting, and y'all came to Dayton, we had our first meeting, and then you guys went on and did your work. Is that?
Well, yeah, we did have a joint meeting. I remember that. And, and then when the pandemic hit and the whole thing was turning into a, not only a pandemic mess, but it was turning into a mess because Dayton was moving ahead and we thought there was a, an agreement on what amount would be on the Dayton warrant, and that's what we put on our town meeting warrant, and that's what got approved. And then the Rehoboth meeting was delayed until December. But when it was held, it was already after the deadline that had been set by the Department of Ed. And so, you know, in all honesty, yes, Rehoboth did raise and appropriate exactly what had been asked for. And because Dayton thought it had an agreement and raised and appropriated a lesser amount, it was the Department Ed's turn to say to the Town of Dayton, you're going to pay the full amount. And that's why we still, I think we got notification, we've got to transfer like 240,000. The whole process became, from where we were the first year, which I thought went pretty well, to what happened last year. The whole thing between the, the town meeting dates and the votes and the pandemic, it just turned into a, a mess. And the Department of Ed just said, this is what you're going to do, Dayton. And, and so the meetings ended because there was nothing less left to discuss. I'm hoping this year we can reach consensus so we can finally free ourselves, quite frankly, from the outside influence of the Department of Ed. But that's all going to depend on the voters in both towns and what happens. But it would be nice to have our school systems back in, I'll call it, local control. We'll see what happens.
So that makes sense. It would be hugely helpful if you attended with me, Selectwoman Goulart.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel more, I feel, yeah, definitely more comfortable. Not, it has nothing to do with you. But Selectman Goulart, you're like, we've been through all the ups and downs and the twists and turns and the roller coaster that is, you know, the school district over the last few years. We always support the school district. But I think Selectman Goulart will be the best resource for you, especially getting your sea legs under you in, you know, in regards to the district anyway.
No, that makes perfect sense. Thank you again, Selectwoman Goulart.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda. Oh, do we need to vote on anything? I'm sorry. We have, we have a consensus, right?
Yep.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a letter to Department of Public Health requesting that towns be allowed to set up local vaccination sites. I requested this be on the agenda in response to basically the regional effort that we're having to put together. It seems like right as Chief McGee and Mr. Pillings and I had figured out a deal or figured out a potential contract with a third-party ambulance company, private, to do the vaccine administration locally for at least the 65 to 75 plus. Literally the next day after we had put in all the work and had town council review the contract, we got the letter from DPH and Town Administrator Mullin, thank you for forwarding the bad news to me. But we did hear that basically DPH, Mass Department of Public Health, was no longer going to allow municipalities to do local, I don't know what the word is, like by themselves, vaccine efforts. However, my understanding has changed somewhat, that they may think about allowing people to regionalize and do it. But I do think it's important that the board, and why I requested this be on the agenda. I think it's important for us to let our state delegation and Massachusetts Department of Public Health know that we do want local control, we do want to be able to do something locally. And so that's why I put this on the agenda, and I'm just asking basically what my colleagues feel and if you agree that we should, you know, I guess, join other towns that are doing it and ask for, you know, the ability to do our own local vaccine administration.
So is this letter in addition to sending the letter to Representative that had that and Senator Mark Pacheco?
Yes.
It might help, yep.
And specifically, not even for, for, I'm sorry, Selectwoman Goulart, not even for the state delegation so much, but really for Mass Department of Public Health, who made the decision more than anything. Selectman Goulart?
I think now that we voted to contact our senator and rep and we want to go into a regional setup with Totten and whoever else is going to collaborate with us, I think it addresses this issue. I would not send a separate letter to the Department of Public Health. City of Totten is saying, we need your support and we need you to get in touch with your, like I say, representative and senator, and we're going to do that. When I first read this, all I could think of was, be allowed that towns be allowed to set up local vaccination sites. To me, that sounds like standalone, and we know that isn't going to happen. And I would be concerned that if we sent a letter to the Department of Public Health instead of just following what Totten has asked us to do and that we voted to do, I don't want them to think we're trying to say we want our own also. That's not what we're saying. I think our first vote covers what we really intend to do. So I don't think we have to act on this.
That makes sense, Selectwoman Goulart. How do you feel, Selectman Pacheco?
I agree with what Mrs. Z said.
Just so everyone's aware, I requested this be on the agenda. That regional conversation was not anywhere, this is much, you know, before that. So, you know, it's just new information came literally today before the meeting. So I appreciate the sentiments of my colleagues. Um so I appreciate um the sentiments of my colleagues and I do agree.
Yeah, I well.
Too late to take it off, though.
That, yeah, and 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 as I say, if we didn't get the news we got tonight, because that was news to me, and uh like I say, I'm ready to jump on board on that, whatever we can do. And um if we didn't get that, then certainly I would say we need to do this because they got to hear from us so they know how we feel, and we feel like we're being left out. Uh, you know, hey, uh Dr. Z, kind of like South Coast Rail.
That left-hand turn?
Exactly. That that right-hand, that right-hand detour. We're being left out down here, but but uh yeah, I think we're all set for the time being.
I agree. So no action on this, okay?
Okay.
Uh, we did receive a letter. Um it's it's really an email and I apologize. Um to, it's a reevaluation request for the Board of Health for the office manager role, and give me just a moment to scroll down. My apologies. So I'll read, I'll go in order. I did receive a request um from the Health Department, the Board of Health, um to reevaluate the office manager position. But obviously, my first question that came to my mind was wait, I don't want to decide this and do something if I don't hear from the union first because the request really came from the Board of Health and I didn't hear anything from the union. And that's, you know, I'm on my toes. So we did receive an email on February tenth and it states um it's from Joseph McCardle, who's the president of the Mass Laborers District Council, and he says, I'm in receipt of the reevaluation request for the Board of Health. This is a request from the Board of Health that incorporates both union and non-union positions to be looked at by the Board of Selectmen. So now we're talking about possibly the health agent position, which is non-union, and also any union positions such as the office manager role. The union always is interested in having positions looked at in order to be sure that they are properly compensated. If there are positions that have undergone changes due to job requirements, then certainly they need to be looked at much more closely. Please let me know if you need anything further from me or if you wish to discuss. This prompted my response on the same day. Good morning, Joe. Um we'll get this on an upcoming Board of Selectmen's meeting agenda. My question is, does the Board of Selectmen work internally to reevaluate these positions and submit our responses to the union? Or do we all sit together, Board of Selectmen and union, and negotiate? Thanks so much. And he responded very simply, the Board of Selectmen would handle internally and then contact the union. Um and so that's why it's on the agenda tonight. How do we want to approach or not approach reevaluating the Board of Health positions?
Is this for the upcoming fiscal year?
I would assume so. Um I will tell my board colleagues, um and we haven't got there yet, so that's why I haven't mentioned it. They did request increases for a non-union and a union position in the FY twenty-two budget. I have made the town administrator recommendations for those positions and um I obviously did we we can't just give a union member more money. There's a collective bargaining agreement. So in my town administrator recommendation, I put the correct salary request based on the current collective bargaining agreement. Um so I didn't honor those requests and I gave the health agent a straight two percent. Um so that's where we are. But yes, to answer your question, Selectman Gulart, I do think the intent is to have this for FY twenty-two.
Okay, backing up further, there was another request or suggestion of something from a couple of department heads.
Correct.
That we look at uh certain salaries.
Correct.
And we deferred that until the, we got a town administrator so we could discuss it with the town administrator. So that's another issue that's still open.
Correct.
I think um I think what we need to do is defer it again until we can actually discuss this with the town administrator and uh I mean, if we only look at one and there's a request to do more than one, you know what that's going to lead to. Um and if it's the FY twenty-two budget, I think we have time to look at it, whether we're only going to do one or whatever, but I I really need some kind of uh guidance from the town administrator. Once he's aware of what it is that has been requested, the history of this, because that's a history with this whole thing. And I don't mean one person. I mean, looking at the um uh salaries for for people covered under the clerical uh agreement. Um so uh I I think we need to defer it again. I don't think we can do anything tonight.
No, I totally agree. Um and I do want to hear from Selectman Pacheco as well. I did just want to add, though, that there is a slight distinction in the two requests, the the original request from the town treasurer and the town clerk, and then this request. The previous request, I believe, was about salary. So that's a strict wage thing that we will discuss. I think this request is like a full reevaluation, meaning job duties, hours and wage. So I think this request from the Board of Health is a little bit more intensive than the wage request from the clerk and treasurer's departments.
But when we discuss those, that that uh having the wage study done, I told you the history of the past three and job descriptions came into it, and then we strongly said, you got to tell us what changed, and they gave us the same. They photo the job descriptions that were on file. So that's why the last one, as I said, quite frankly, was worthless. I believe if we're just talking wages in a collective bargaining agreement, if their position is, we think we should get more money, my answer is, based on what? We we have to look at duties. Some people may have had changes in that whole group. Um so that's why I'm thinking this this whole thing, whether it's one person or everyone covered under that CBA, we really need to sit down and discuss this um with the town administrator and get some direction. Um uh that, as I say, uh that's what my feeling is.
I agree. Selectman Pacheco?
Yeah, so I was part of the um negotiations on the clerical contract along with the former town administrator. And we had a verbal agreement with the union uh that we would do a wage study on all the different jobs uh that I that were involved in the union. Wages may go up, make wages may go down, wages may stay the same, but we agreed that we would look at this after the contract was approved by the town and the board and everything else, that we would take a look at it. And then when that was brought up by uh the treasurer and the uh, I believe, the town clerk, uh we agreed that we will wait for Mr. Mullen to to come on board. So it is something we can talk about in the future. I think there was talk of hiring an outside age uh group or agency to do the work on the wage study. So uh that was part of an unwritten agreement, but it was understood by all parties that we would do this. So that's a little separate from what we're talking about right now, but then again, I think for the union position, it is the same, right?
It is the same. No, what you're saying would address, could potentially address all the requests that we have in front of us. Um I I guess my thing, Selectman Pacheco, is just we don't have a town administrator, and I know I'm preaching that, we know this. I'm really speaking to the public. Like, we don't have a town administrator. We're trying to get people vaccinated and save lives. Like, I just, you know, I know we can chew gum and talk at the same time or whatever, or walk or talk. But I really think that we we need to focus. We need to buckle down. We need to get people vaccinated. And yes, we'll have this conversation, but I do think it probably, to your point, Selectman Pacheco, does need to be a bigger conversation with a broader solution um that I just don't think we have capacity to do like right at this moment on February twenty-fourth. Honestly. So I agree with Selectman Gulart.
Another thing too is, those past studies, I guess is what I'll call them, uh all the documentation for them should be on file. And the last one that was done was a complete review done by a labor attorney. You know who I'm referring to, Dr. Z, who who was totally um not involved with any of this stuff, but he took the his sta- the historical data and looked at the scoring thing, and what he came back with was that what had been done was truly based on the criteria for the study. People still weren't happy. If 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 you think you should get more money and the answer comes back, you're about where you should be unhappy. I agree with you. I think tonight, number one, we don't have time to do this. Number two, when the TA comes on board and has an opportunity to look at the historical data, discuss this with the board. If we can get this done in time for the town meeting, the annual, that's fine. But if we can't get it done in time, if a study of outside agency or whatever we're going to do with this is what's being proposed, we can still bring it back to town meeting up until we have the meeting that sets the um tax rate, okay? It can be a, if there are salary adjustments to be made based on a wage study, it could be a raise and appropriate item at the fall meeting. So um I agree with everything else we've got in front of us right now, including still trying to deal with the pandemic, because we can't even get people vaccinated. Um, you know, um I'm not saying this isn't important. I'm just saying, priority speaking, as the board, we have to prioritize what's important, and quite frankly, the public health, especially for the people who can't get out to get vaccines, uh we we really have to focus on that. So yes, this is important, but I don't see us getting this resolved tonight.
I agree.
So shall I entertain a motion to take this under advisement until such time that the town administrator is on boarded, comfortable, settled, and able to research this with us?
I will make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Gulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Next on our agenda, under correspondence, we have a resignation letter from our assistant town accountant, Linda McCarron, and in lieu of me literally breaking out in tears, I would like one of my colleagues to please read the letter.
I'll read it. It's dated February seventh. It's addressed to Chris Laviette, Board of Selectmen, Mary Hathaway, and it's from Linda McCarron. Please accept this as my notice to retire from my position as Assistant Town Accountant effective March twenty, twenty twenty-one. After nearly completing fifteen years of service to the town, I want to move on to the next chapter of my life. This decision was not as easy as I thought it was going to be. As I tried to pick the perfect date to leave, I finally realized there is, there isn't one. In my position, I work closely with all departments. I hope in leaving, everyone knows how much I enjoyed working with them. I got to know so many of my coworkers and treasured the relationships we have, especially with the girls in town hall. Along with a lot of pride, we were, we also enjoyed a little laughter along the way as well. I am grateful to have worked for the best. Dayton has some remarkable employees. Any town would be proud to have. I am requested to use the last week as vacation, make my last workday, March eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Sincerely, Linda McCarron. That's not good news.
It's not. It's not, but I say this to, I always say this like about the employees, especially when they're top-notch like Mrs. McCarron is. I always say, and I said this to our town clerk, I said, I I hope you stay. I would probably beg you to stay. However, at the end of the day, you have given a lot. You've given us your best, you know, just years of dedication and you don't owe the town anything. And I mean that. I I hope, I wish, right? We wish it could be different, but I've learned so much from Mrs. McCarron in just like the last four months. Um I just, I feel like a better person. I feel like a better um selectman um for knowing the payroll intricacies, the contract language, all the ins and outs. Um she really is is a scholar in so many ways, um and I will miss her incredibly.
And and it's a credit to her that I think a year ago she was thinking about retiring, and then we had the pandemic and she decided to stay and help the town out during a very difficult time. So uh I really appreciate that, that she took that into consideration, so I want to give the town another year. So I know I'm going to miss her.
Absolutely.
Glad to see her go.
Selectman Gulart?
Well, and the other thing was, if you remember, there was a gap between us losing our former town accountant and hiring a new town accountant, and Linda had to take the weight of all of that on herself uh and worked alone. Um had to be the knowledge person, had to be the one to know where it was in the file or whatever. Um so that was, that was a big task.
Yeah.
Um I will make a motion that we accept the resignation for retirement purposes from Mrs. Linda McCarron, um Assistant Town Accountant, with thanks and appreciation for her six, sixteen years of service, and we wish her the best in her retirement.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh actually, I should add, uh Mrs. Brady and I are diligently working um on a job description, although we already have one from Mrs. McCarron, um and so we can get a job advertisement out as soon as possible and advertise internally. So I just wanted my board colleagues to know that we're working on that. Hearing no further discussions, Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Do we have any acknowledgements besides you, Mrs. Brady, for being a rock star?
Thank you, but no, we don't.
Okay. Under minutes, um I will entertain motions to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one and January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
I so move.
Second.
You're not going to ask your questions, Selectman Pacheco?
No, I'm not.
All right.
I'm tired.
He doesn't care if it's been changed. Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is an aye. And I will entertain motions to accept for review the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting of February third, twenty twenty-one and uh the regular meeting of February tenth, twenty twenty-one.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Selectman Gulart, you have the floor for the approval of the warrants?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved, thirty-four A dash twenty-one in the amount of a hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars, eighty-five cents payroll. Thirty-four B dash twenty-one in the amount of two hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars, ninety-six cents accounts payable. Thirty-four C dash twenty-one. Oh, this is the one Mrs. Our rock star, Mrs. Brady sneaks in that sticks in my throat. Two million, eight hundred, two thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars, fifty cents accounts payable. That's the DR assessment. All dated February seventeenth be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Uh any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Yes.
I move that the following warrants be approved.
Oh, I, you are correct.
Hey, Mrs. Brady says there's two sets. There's two.
Right. Well, I tried to, I tried to save us a bill.
Well, it's the wrong one. You're objecting to you. Should have stopped the previous one, the two million. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrant be, warrants be approved, thirty-five A dash twenty-one in the amount of a hundred and two thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars, thirty cents payroll, thirty-five B dash twenty-one in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred ten dollars, sixty-five cents payroll, and thirty-five C dash twenty-one in the amount of two hundred ninety-five thousand, forty-seven dollars, sixty cents accounts payable dated February twenty-fourth be approved.
And I apologize for preempting it uh moving on too quickly, Selectman Gulart. Uh any further discussion under warrants for February twenty-fourth?
Nope.
Hearing none, uh Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Any further public input this evening? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight to twenty-one A, number three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do so declare. Police, one, police union correspondence, two, firefighter union grievance, and three, discuss possible need for Juneteenth holiday MOUs. An open session will not reconvene.
I so move.
Second.
And so uh so let's take it to a vote, Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye. Everyone have a wonderful evening. It was nice to spend it with you all. I wish it was a little shorter, but be safe and be kind to everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.